There's Noel.
Yeah, buddy. What's up Noel? How are you doing, buddy? The silent wave, we'll take it. I love it. All right. Well, we'll call this meeting the Board of Appeals to order. Thank you again for everybody coming. I think we have every current member and we have Corey. Thank you for joining us as an alternate as well. Uh, he uh, right now will not need you in. We do have enough, but I love the participation and the willingness to be here. Um, so I will skip over roll call officially since we were doing that, but maybe for the record, all members are present. Uh, before we get started, we do a couple of things. We do have a pretty long one. So it's eight, eight items. So let's just keep that in mind, you know, Noel, you're really good and I'll call upon you to kind of keep us on pace. I tend to talk. So cut me off if you feel needed or we need to get to a vote. We feel that we're in concert. Let's uh, for the sake of everybody's time, because I know sometimes these can get a little long in the tooth. For all those that are on the call, um, before we get to all the formality stuff, uh, we're the Board of Appeals. So we're just, um, you know, volunteers appointed by the mayor. Um, we're not elected officials, but we're, you're here to present a case. Um, to us, um, basically like a judge, you know, and a judge and jury and, and your job is to tell us, hey, this is why I want to appeal the code that the city has written. This is what I'm looking to do. Here's why I can't. My property doesn't allow me to do this. Um, and this is what I'd like to do. And then we will vote majority rules in this case. Um, before you present your case, what we will do is we'll have Steph who's with us from the, the city. She will kind of tee it up and give us the parameters. We will ask some questions around the city to get our heads wrapped around it. And then we will, um, hear the case. We will ask if there's anybody else on the call that wants to hear vocalize support. Or, or maybe, you know, they're not super pumped about it. Um, and then we'll, we'll go ahead and vote again, majority rules. And then if you do get, uh, the approval, um, just work with Steph and those at the city and they'll help you through the process moving forward. I think I've covered the bulk of it, um, there. So again, thank you all for being here. We will try our best to not make this a super long night. And also forgive anybody that is at home. Um, you know, the virtual world is, is difficult. So if my kids run through, you know, forgive me, I will do my best to stay on mute and stuff when I'm not speaking. But I think we're all used to this at this point. So again, I love that there's so many people here. And we do have an alderman here as well, Mr. Sawyer, which is great. So we'll, we'll keep that in mind in the background as well. All right, let's jump in. Um, does anybody, um, before we get to approving the agenda, is there anybody that needs to abstain from any votes tonight?
Uh, actually I need to abstain from appeal twenty-two zero nineteen. Um, the contractor is a friend of mine, so.
Copy that. Okay. And we will still be okay. We'll have four there. Um, so we're good. There, um, anybody else have any issues abstaining or conflict of interest in anything?
Um, Mr. Chair, I do have a conflict in that I need to appear, um, uh, before the plan commission this evening. So I'll have to jump off in about a half an hour and I'll return as quickly as possible. I think my items early on their agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um. Cool. Was anybody out to see any of the properties? I know Barb, you had mentioned, um, something in an email.
I did. I was out to see all of them. I, I think as a junior member of this committee, it's incumbent on me to really understand. So it was two hours of driving around town yesterday, but I did, I got them all and it was good to see them.
Yeah, I went to all of them except twenty-two zero nineteen since I wasn't going to vote on that one anyway. So, um, I'm surprised I didn't run into you, Barb.
Yeah, we were like all over this whole city.
Yeah, new members killing it. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. It also helps. Tom, how are you, uh?
I went to three of them on the east side, uh, nineteen, twenty and twenty-three.
Okay. Twenty twenty-three. Copy that. Okay. Thank you, Tom. Anything else? Okay. And while you're out there or anybody outside, did anybody speak to anybody about these variances, um, that we need to know about and put on the record?
I spoke to, to legal about a, a text I received and asked if I needed to, um, disclose that. And I was told, yes, I did. So the text was basically opposed to the police fence being, um, being put in. And I did not respond to the text and it won't have influence on the way that I make my decision today.
Okay. Thank you for disclosing that. Tom, I saw your hand go up. Go ahead.
I had, uh, correspondence, email correspondence with my alderman, uh, Galvin.
Yep.
And I forwarded that to, uh, the board and asked that it be read into the minutes per, uh, Alderville's request. I also reached out to the alder for, uh, the area where the police station is. And I received a text back and it, I don't know if you want me to read that into the record or not. I can either forward it to Stephanie or I can read it however you want to deal with it.
Yeah, thank you for that. Let's, uh, when we get to the agenda bottom, is it long?
Uh, no, no, a couple paragraphs.
Okay. You know, when we get to that item, let's just read it real quick. So it's on the record. Bob will ask you to do the same thing if you feel comfortable with that. I know you didn't respond, but just so we have it or you can forward it off, whatever is easiest for you, just so it's part of the record. Okay?
Yeah.
I would just say that I think the person that sent it was talking to me as a friend. And I think that he would, it would be awkward for me to read it because it was casual language.
Okay.
And so it just, the spirit of it was just against him. Okay.
Cool. Stephen, you had your hand up?
Yeah. And I spoke to the neighbor of, uh, twenty-two zero twenty-four, um, who apparently is also on the plan committee. Very briefly, uh, mostly asking him if I was at the right house and if, if the neighbor was home and then I peeked into the backyard. So that was, uh, that was about it. So I don't think there's anything significant to report there, but I do want to be on the up and up with it.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Noel, are you good? Okay. All right. Great. Cool. Well then, um, let's go ahead and, um, approve the agenda. I know that there, Barb, you had maybe potentially wanted to make a, an adjustment for the agenda tonight.
Yes. Now I've been asked by two different alders to make adjustments. Um, so the first would be to move item six to the first item. And then to move item eight to the second item, because they, these are elders that have other things happening.
Great. And I did get your email Barb as well, just so you know, and I do think we should discuss, um, timing. It seemed like the city was open to it. I'm open to it, whatever works, but I didn't make the, the timing of the meeting because the hours will lap. And I think everybody that's been on the board for a period of time, having alder engagement is better for everyone. And if that, it seems to be there's constantly with the plan commission, I think it is, there's a conflict there. So it would be, I would be open to it. But we'll discuss that after we're done with the meeting in our operation hall section. Um, okay. So, uh, we have a motion, I guess, is that a formal motion that will?
Yeah, I would, I would move to amend the agenda and to move item six to the first item on the agenda. And item eight to the second item on the agenda. And that would be the, the amendment. Then we'll have to vote on the amended agenda.
Yep. Anybody have any issues or discussion with that? Or I'll take a second?
A second.
Thank you, Noel. Any other discussion? Okay, let's take a vote on the amended agenda. Um, all those in favor to approve the amendment to the agenda, say aye. Aye. And I think we then need to take a vote on the.
Yeah, I moved, I moved the amended agenda.
Yep. Now we approve the amended event agenda now that we've moved it. Uh, I'll take a, so movement, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Noel. Um, all right. So any other discussion on that? Okay, uh, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, great. Sorry, everybody on the call. There's procedural things that we need to do to get through and then we'll, we'll jump into the, the fun stuff here. Um, last thing we tend to do here. So I always like to give a disclaimer here. Typically we're supposed to discuss, right, as a board, um, and not open the floor, um, until we want to hear from the public. But what it does is it creates all these votes on, off, on, off. And we as a board have decided a little bit ago, just to say, hey, we're going to vote to open the floor throughout the meeting. Um, however, not to be a warning, but, uh, we don't want debate or discussion across parties. We really want those that are contributing, um, to talk to us as a board. So if there's a lot of cross talk or it starts getting hot, we will vote to close the floor. And that then means there's no comments from the public. But again, instead of wasting everybody's time with procedural stuff to try and open and close the floor for discussion, we do it once. So I will take a motion to open the floor for discussion.
So motion.
Second.
Uh, Stephen, I'll give it to you first. Barb, second. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So the floor is open for discussion. Uh, again, those on the call, we will, um, we will call upon you as you go. Just to give you again, now we're getting into the meeting, the meeting, um, we will have the city tee up the item for us. We'll go over just kind of some questions and get our heads wrapped around it. We will hear from those that are applying for the variance. We will ask if there's anybody in support or against it. We will discuss that. And then the board will get back together, ask their questions, discuss their point of view. We'll take a vote and then we move on to the next one. Um, again, try and limit the thoughts. Sometimes there's a back and forth that happens and I get that that's normal. Um, I, my ask is that it would be, um, more of a, hey, if there's new information, not a debate. Let us do that debate. Okay. Any other thoughts before we jump into the meat of the meeting?
We might have to approve meeting minutes from the last meeting.
Oh, did I skip that?
Yes.
Oh, I always feel like that should be before the agenda. Um, okay, let's go ahead and approve the minutes. Was there any adjustments anybody needed to make for that?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I got a first and a second by Tom and Noel. Uh, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay. All any opposed? I don't think there was any. All right. Now we are ready. Sorry about that, Tom. I appreciate it. Thank you for the call. That's why you're the veteran on the team here. All right. So instead of starting with number one, we are going to start with six because of our, um, amended agenda. So this is appeal two-two dash zero-two-four, if I'm correct. Brian Johnson, pro property owner proposes a new garage and driveway expansion for a single home, a single family home in an office residential district at five-one-six Hubbard Street. Um, all right. So let's take it away. Steph, give us the, the overview.
Hey, so this is downtown Hubbard Street. You can see here with the star, uh, what they are requesting are two separate variances. One for a reduction with the fourth foot rear setback of an accessory structure for a new garage. The applicant is requesting two and a half feet for that setback. And then also the maximum impervious coverage, which is sixty percent in our office residential district, they're requesting seventy percent. Um, so the site plan shows a little bit of what they're looking to do, expand this detached garage, reduce the setback here. An expansion of this garage area, which will increase the impervious coverage from sixty-one percent to seventy. And I believe that is it. The applicant is on the line if there are additional questions about the site plan.
Who are there? Any other, uh, question? I have one right out of the gate. What is the, do we know what the current setback is, um, versus the new setback?
I do not.
Okay. Um, maybe the caller does.
Um, I'm, I'm Mason. I'm in for Brian. He's on vacation right now. I'm the contractor.
Okay.
I'm not a hundred percent sure what the exact setback is right now on the rear lot line. It appears to be about five feet. There's not been a survey or anything done. But just from, I know the house on the corner was just built and they did have a survey done. So we know where a couple of the corner property line markers are. And it, I'd say it's about five feet from the backyard right now.
Okay.
We also received lawyers of support or emails of support from two of the three adjoining neighbors.
Oh, great. Were those emailed out by any chance or were they?
No, I just got them today. So I can read them into the record if you would like.
Uh, just include them. I think you can email them. Is that okay? Are they long? I mean, that's my big thing. I'm trying not to waste people's time. If it's generally in support, I think that's good enough for me. There's anybody on the board that wants to hear it. But if, uh, for the record, as long as it's included in the, the notes at some point, that's fine with me.
Okay, sounds good. I'll just email them out.
But both, you said you got two and it was for adjoining neighbors and they were both in support?
Yes.
That's fantastic.
Was one of them the rear adjoining neighbor or were they both on the sides?
One is rear. Okay.
Okay, um, Mason, since you're here for, uh, Brian, um, is there any additional information or is it, you know, we want to take us through your point of view? What's the why? There's three kind of questions we always look for in the application. Is why does the, uh, the property not allowed you to, uh, to do it, uh, to develop the property the way you'd like? Um, the three-step test. So the property, unique characteristics, um, two, why would it be contrary to public interest? I feel like the, the record and beyond, obviously hearing from the public, um, is supporting that at this point. Um, and then why would it prevent you, um, from using the property in the permitted purpose?
Uh, yeah. So right now he's just got the one stall garage and we're looking to do a two-stall. We had looked at adjusting the sizes, but obviously that's not possible. Being that in the property's current condition, it's already over sixty percent. Um, really, we're just trying to make it practical for the, something to fit two, two cars. And his garbage cans right now, he's got to keep some stuff outside and, um, well, he, he can't even fit his car in there right now. And even if the, uh, the garage is about to the point where I'm surprised the last windstorm, it didn't blow over, to be honest with you. Um, but that's the main thing. So just for, just for personal use and to keep, to keep some things out of the yard. Um, it's a very small lot. It's forty feet wide. Um, his driveway, we did some remodeling there a couple of years ago. We couldn't even get our trailer down his driveway. So he's already very, very tight. Um, and I know he's got two daughters, which one may even be getting her license fairly soon. So I know he's going to have a couple more vehicles there in the near future. And I think he's trying to plan for that. And then he's also got this deck in the back that was existing and with the two-stall garage, it's, it's, it's going to be hard to get to even use it with that deck being there. And he's looking at possibly changing the configuration of the deck, depending on what, what we all are going to end up being able to do. Um, but I think the other thing, which I don't know which, if it's included in this variance request or not, but we're replacing a section of driveway that is on the lot line and we need to be two and a half feet off the lot line. And right now with the current width of the driveway, if we had to be two and a half feet off the lot line, we, I don't even know if you could hardly get a bicycle down it. So, um, it's pretty much, it's just tight. If, if this lot was six feet less deep, we'd be allowed to be two and a half feet setback off the back. And the corner lot, which was just built on, that's technically his side. Brian's back lot line is his side lot line. And so he's two and a half feet off the back. So we just keep it continuous with the other garages back there.
Any questions from the board, um, for, um, the applicant's representative? I do know that I have a real quick one. So I'll jump, jump in here. Um, it noticed in the application, it said it reduced it from twenty-four to twenty, um, feet. So from twenty-four by twenty-four to twenty-four by twenty, is that the width or the depth that was reduced?
The width was reduced because if we were any wider, it would be pretty much useless with how tight the deck and everything is back there. So we kept a little on the depth for him to be able to put garbage cans or snowblower, lawnmower in the back and still be able to park a vehicle in there.
Okay, cool. Any other questions from the, uh, for the applicant?
Um, I do have a question. So he's considering, uh, I, I did take a look, uh, but behind the property and is he, you said he's thinking about rebuilding that deck. Um, and if he eliminated the deck and just replaced it with steps, would he reach the permeability requirements? I don't think there's a lot that can be done about the, about the, uh, setback because of the, the size and the age of the neighborhood. But would that change his permeability request?
If he completely got rid of the deck, I think he would be now. What's, what I find is strange is that there's no other municipality I've ever dealt with that considers a deck as non-permeable.
That was going to be my next question.
So I'm, I'm a little confused in the first point on why a deck's even considered impermeable. But nonetheless, yes, I think if the deck was removed, we would, it would be very close. It'd be very close.
So then the question is to the city, Steph, do you know, are decks considered non-permeable?
No, they are counted in your impervious coverage. So the sixty-one percent, what I, I, I would guess, I would venture a guess that it includes the deck that's there.
Fair enough. That's all I have. Thank you very much. Oh, uh, one other thing, if, if, uh, he did not include the driveway variance in this request. So he's going to have to make another one. If he wants to replace the driveway.
For the?
For the, the lot line, for the width of the driveway.
Okay.
He didn't include it on the request.
And I, so did, if we're replacing it exactly how it was, is a variant, is a variance required?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, we may want to touch base on that offline, Mason. I think that our interim zoning administrator, who is not me, can administratively waive some of those things. And I think that was part of this discussion as well. So this may not need further action, but we'll have to double check with our zoning administrator.
Sounds good.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Tommy, you're on mute. I'm, uh, I've been doing, uh, virtual for how long and I still struggle with the mute, unmute thing, uh, this world. Let's get back in person at some point. All right, Tom, go ahead.
I, uh, I, I guess I'm looking at, uh, the, uh, I was concentrating more on Steve with respect to the driveway and what's going to happen downstream with the driveway. So I would, I don't really have any thoughts on it right now.
Okay, let's ask if there's anybody else on the call that, uh, wants to speak for or against this variance. We'll give that a second. If you are on mute, we'll need your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing none. Um, we'll go ahead and just discuss as a board, um, and then we'll take a vote. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have just a question regarding that, um, driveway. Um, are we allowed to, um, you know, opine on that or add that to the request? You know, if we were to want to approve the, the impervious surface as well as the rear yard setback, could we also just approve the driveway, um, setback to the lot line?
You guys are really testing me on my first meeting. I don't believe so, because there are notices that go out that give out the specific codes that we are amending. So I would not feel comfortable with that action. However, I believe because this is a narrow lot, that is why we can have the administrative reduction. So if my memory serves me correctly, Dave Buck can waive that on his own without the need for this. Um, I can try to get Dave on the call to confirm that if you'd like me to do so, um, but I don't believe we can add it as part of the request right now.
Yeah, maybe that's why it's not even part of the request.
That's what I would guess. Brian knows how to run this stuff. So I'm guessing that was what the discussion had been.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I look at this and we've seen similar, you know, small central city lots with, um, you know, a, a decrepit old garage that, uh, needs to be replaced. And we're looking to replace it with, you know, a contemporary, you know, um, garage that they've already reduced in size here to get the kind of standard functionality out of your, you know, it's the intention that you can park your cars off street on these lots and, and, uh, not having that, you know, would, would be in my determination and at least a hardship, um, as, uh, as it would be a significant thing. Um, and I don't have any problem with this request as presented.
Um, just to be quick, I'll echo Noel. I like that they've, uh, created the alternative, reduced the size, showing that they're willing to work as close as they can to try and get it to work. Um, again, the lots are, are skinny there and small and two-car garages are, are the goal for most property owners. So I think it fits the three-step question for me. So I don't, I don't have any issue for this either. Other board members, thoughts, questions, concerns? Barb, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I also looked at the three questions and, um, the lot is, is tiny. And I recall from our last meeting that we approved driveways being widened, although that's not even part of this, right? Because that wasn't, that wasn't in there. But, um, but the physical conditions that are unique to the property, I felt there that they were in. I like that they made that garage a little bit smaller. Um, and I don't see it, it being contrary to public interest because especially if the person behind was in favor of it, then, then that, that would be the person I would want to know most. I'm glad Noel asked that question. So I don't have any concern with this.
Tom or Stephen, any comments for the record?
Uh, I can echo Noel's, uh, comments with respect to corner lots and how one corner lot can affect an adjoining lot. And the fact that there's no pushback from the neighbor, I would be in favor, looking forward to it.
Uh, as would I, the, the age of the, uh, the neighborhood and, uh, you know, the, the, it's a dead end street, um, street parking would be extremely difficult there. Um, and the, the existing garage is physically leaning. I could see it. Um, so that, that is going to have to go at some point or another. And it seems to me that they've made as, as much, uh, as much allowance as they can. So I would be in favor of it as well.
I, I move approval of the request as presented.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. I got a first and a second for a motion to approve the variance, one from Noel and second from Stephen. Um, any other discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of approving the variance request, go ahead and say aye.
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 Any opposed? No. Okay. Uh, good, Mason. So parking is a solvable problem. Uh, so, um, we will, uh, work with the city, obviously communicate with Brian. Um, and, uh, you're good to go. You can please, if you want to stay, uh, please, if, if you don't, no one will be hurt feelings. If you go ahead and hang up and leave the call, uh, but thanks for being here and, uh, we'll go, we'll move forward here. Um, so now, uh, per the amended agenda, we will jump to item six.
No, item eight.
I'm sorry, item eight. Thank you. Let me pull that back up, go back to the beginning here. All right. So item eight is, uh, appeal twenty-two, um, dash oh-two-six. Um, it is a Golden House Inc. On behalf of Freedom House Ministries, Inc., property owner, uh, proposes to temporarily relocate a shelter facility in the very density R-three district at eight forty North Taylor Street. Um, so again, um, whoever's on the call to speak on this, we'll have the city tee it up and then we'll call on you to, um, get us all, all situated. All right. Um, let's go ahead and go, Steph. Thank you.
Thank you. So we don't have much dimensional information to share because this is a U-variance, which we don't see a lot of at the Board of Appeals. Um, the location is here along North Taylor Street. This was formerly a site, I believe, for Freedom House or another.
It was for Marion House. Yep. Director. So I remember.
Um, so what is happening is that the Golden House is, um, going to be rebuilding their structure on University Avenue. They need a temporary location. Since this used to be a similar shelter use, they are looking to relocate there on a temporary basis. Um, our code does allow for the expansion of temporary uses, um, by our zoning administrator. So when Paul was still here, he made the determination that this was a similar enough use to be granted a temporary use permit for this district. Um, however, that only allows for a maximum of ninety calendar days with one possible ninety-day extension. So they are seeking to do a longer term temporary use permit. Um, I believe that they are requesting for a year, but I'm not sure if the applicant wants to speak to how much flexibility they may need with that.
Okay. Um, thank you, Steph. Um, any questions for, uh, for the board, for the city in terms of getting your heads wrapped around, uh, what it is we're, we're appealing here?
We're just talking about allowing for a longer period of time for the temporary, the temporary use.
Yes.
That is my understanding.
My, my, I'll, my two cents before I drop off the call, I'll return later, but I'll probably miss the vote on this is that it seems logical and, and I would support it unless something emerges during the discussion that sounds like something Noel would disagree with. Then feel free to interpret it as.
Yeah. And I'll call upon, uh, I know you have to go, Noel. And before we go to the applicant, I know, I believe this is Alder Sawyer's district as well. And he's on the call and I know there's conflicts. So Alder Sawyer, if you want to jump in and give your thoughts real quick on this, I know you might have to jump off.
All right. Thank you, Chair, for that. And, um, you know, as Alder Dort or Barb Dorf mentioned that it was part of, um, the Marion House. It was the Marion House before. Uh, it's near where I live. So it's been a very good neighbor. We've had no problems. I have had no neighbors call to disagree with any of this. Uh, I guess that was my initial question and I think Steph, uh, answered it very well. You know, they were looking for ninety days and with a possible ninety-day extension, but it sounds to me, according to the zoning code, that's what it's allowed. But it sounds like they're looking for more than a year. Um, so with that being said, um, you know, the code calls for a site plan and I, I really don't think you could do a site plan here, correct, Steph?
Uh, we would have them submit for a change of your site plan, which they would do anyway for more sure. So that would be something we would take care of through site plan review.
Okay. So there is something that they've submitted that way?
Not sure if it's submitted yet. I believe we are waiting for this variance to get approved before submission.
Okay, I see. Okay. Well, uh, without belaboring it, I, I support this. Um, like I said, they're a good neighbor. I've had no problems with that, uh, with the neighbors at all. And, uh, I'll listen to the discussion, but, uh, I may chime in later, but that is my initial, uh, reaction. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Sawyer. And again, I will always say this, we appreciate Alders, uh, taking the time out of their busy, busy schedule. They got a lot of mini committee meetings. And, and you've been really good about joining these. Uh, so I appreciate, uh, your comments and, and joining us. Thank you for that. Um, okay. Any other discussion before we go to the applicants? Okay, let's go ahead and, um, hear from the applicant. I think there's two individuals that I see that are labeled Golden House. Um, Charles and Marissa, is this Charles that I know? Charles and Marissa, is this Charles that I know?
Hi, everyone. My name is Marissa Heim. I'm the grants and outreach manager at Golden House and I'm overseeing our transition committee. We're here today just to ask to be able to occupy the Marion House site, which is currently owned by Freedom House for more than the ninety days with an extension of another ninety days while we undergo the building of our new location on our current site. So we have determined that that site is the best that'll fit the needs of our community to house domestic violence victims, both men, women, or all men, women and children. So we, we have done our work. We have searched for eight months to find a perfect location. And our great community partners over at Freedom House, there's actually one of their board members on the call with us as well, have offered up the use of their, their location for us to house our victims through our, our great community partnership. So we are asking for use up or through September or not September, I'm sorry, through summer of twenty twenty-three, so next summer. As we all know, construction can fluctuate a little bit. We're not sure, you know, if supplies aren't here in time or what that looks like. So we're looking for going in through the summer of next year.
And I know that'll come up. So the, the more specific that you can be with us giving the state of the discussion and if it's leaning towards approval, we'll probably need a little bit more concrete to give you enough runway. That is something. So just keep that in the back of your mind.
Perfect.
As the discussion continues here. And was there another individual that needed to speak on this?
We do have a few other individuals here. Dina Bormans, who is overseeing our capital campaign. And then we also have Charles, who is one of our board members as well. And then Candy from the Freedom House is joining us.
Great, thank you. We'll go around the horn here as you call it out. So we'll start with Dina, Charles, and then we'll go to Candy, if that's okay. Again, not because we don't wanna hear from everybody. We appreciate everybody's participation, but short, succinct, new facts, new information, try not to repeat. And again, I don't wanna take any time away from anybody because I take it up because I talk too much, but just keep, keep it going. We want everybody to give a chance to, to speak. So Dina, we'll go with you.
Thank you. As Marissa said, I'm the development director and I think she did a great job just laying out what we're asking of this committee and in addition, it looks like into summer or, you know, by summer of twenty twenty-three. So not likely that it would be a year, but that's what we're looking for. And I don't have anything else to add other than that.
Thank you, Dina. Thanks for being here. I appreciate it. We'll then jump to Charles and then Candy.
Thank you. My name is Charles Sebelik with Board of Directors of Golden House. The board, our board has approved the transition to the Marion House. And the reason for the extension is the construction timeline that we're looking at is slated to be done in early summer, but you know, just in case there's possible delays.
Great. Thanks for being here, Charles. Good to hear your voice. And then let's jump to Candy, if you don't mind. Candy, just go ahead and unmute and.
Can you hear me? All right. So my name is Candy Conard and I'm on the board for Freedom House and we agree with this request. And for the time that has been requested and then Freedom House then will resume this, this property after Golden House has moved into their new location. Okay?
Great. Thank you for being here and thanks for the community support. I love it when people work together. So thanks for that. So we've heard from the applicant. Is there anybody on the call that needs to also speak for or against this variance? I'll give it a moment. And then a quick housekeeping tip, all those that spoke, do we need their, their names and their addresses for the record?
Yes.
I skipped that, didn't I? All right, we're gonna go back around the horn. Dina, we'll start with you. Name, first and last name and then address. And then we'll go Charles and then we'll go Candy. Go ahead, Dina.
Okay, Dina Bormans. Address is eight twenty-four Red Fox Drive, Green Bay five four three one three.
Great, thank you. Charles, go ahead.
Charles Sebelik, three zero four zero Quarry Park Drive, apartment six, DePere, Wisconsin, five four one one five.
Thanks, Charles. All right, and Candy?
Candy Conard, C O N A R D, seven five zero North New Franken Road, New Franken, five four two two nine.
Love it. Thank you so much. Okay, great. Again, I'm gonna ask the quick question. Anybody here to speak for or against? Okay, board discussion, how are we feeling about this?
I think it's a very logical request. I'm very familiar with property. I've been in it many times when I was a board member for Marion House and I'm, I'm, I have no objection at all. When the time comes, I will make the motion to approve.
I do think we need to discuss at some point to get a bit specific with the time request rather than it being broad, you know, summer. So just keep that in mind as well. Tom, Stephen, any, any thoughts before we get to that specific discussion?
Well, actually, I think the fact that they perform an essential humanitarian service for the city justifies whatever we can do to help them. My, my question would be, do we somehow need to build in some type of flex as far as their construction deadline? Because I think that's pretty much an unknown. And I, I'd be happier if they had maybe a little bit more flexibility as far as if something changes, how would we as a board or how would they as a group deal with that?
Yeah, let's, let's jump on that right now because my feeling, my gut feeling is, is that's pretty much where the board is at, unless I'm way off, but Marissa, summer twenty twenty-three, would you like more runway in a potential, I'm not gonna say there is one, but a potential motion, would you want to go into fall to give more runway or is summer already include that runway?
Um, I think to be on the safe side for, I would like to go like a August to August. So we're looking at this current August, actually vacating our building and moving in and then giving us a year timeframe to the next August. So right before, right before fall. I guess I should also ask if something were to happen, where we would possibly get to August or right before August and something were to happen, is that something where we could come back before the board and ask then for an extension? Or how would that possibly work? Like worst, I'm thinking worst case scenario.
Yeah, that's why I think giving more than you think is better because Steph, if I'm not mistaken, they would have to reapply and redo a fee, correct?
Yeah, so it'd be a new application to do a further extension onto it. And then the board only does meet once a month with a pretty substantial timeline ahead of time for deadline. So it'd either be, then we'd have to keep an eye on, or you could just go ahead with a longer period of time than twelve months.
Yeah.
November. How about November?
I was gonna just suggest that November first to me seems to be that, that saves everyone time and stress because building a building is not fun or easy.
What we're doing is we're suggesting November. If that's what you would like to ask us for, then we can make a motion for that.
No, I think we can confidently go with November.
Okay.
And that, that gives us some buffer and then we can clean it back up for Freedom House and, you know, maybe clean the carpets or something for.
Even better. I love it. Very good. Okay, any discussion? Thoughts, concerns? Yes, go ahead, all.
I just have one, just a quick question. And that's for both Freedom House and Golden House. So Freedom House will be moving out temporarily. Golden House will be moving in. I just wanna make sure that you feel that there's enough room for the folks that need help to be in that facility.
Yes, so it's currently vacant right now in Freedom House. They're actually getting ready for us to move in and sprucing the place up for us. So it's currently vacant, ready for us. After this meeting, we'll be able to get a contract signed and move forward. And then it'll give us time to move out on the back end.
Great. That's all I needed. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you again for all the, the engagement and, and the conversation. Let's go ahead and maybe see if there's a motion out there, Barb.
I'd like to move that we accept this appeal and that it is extended till November first, twenty twenty-three.
And do we have a second? I'm giving it to Tom, if that's okay. So I got a first and a second. All those, will, any of the discussion? All those in favor, go ahead and say aye or raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay, so four zero on that one since we lost Noel, so it still carries, which is great. So again, work with the city on any details there. Again, thank you. Everybody that's on the call, Alder Stoyer, those that participated, please stay on the call if you'd like, or again, no hurt feelings if you decide to, to leave and go enjoy your night. But thanks for being here and thanks for all the, the community support. Appreciate it. Again, thank you, Alder Stoyer.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, let's jump in to, gotta go back to big packet today. Okay, so this would mean that we would now be back to item one, which is Appeal twenty-two dash zero one nine. Phil, and I, I'm so apologize to everybody in advance for last names. I'm gonna say Matern. On behalf of Sam Pavlik, property owner proposes the addition of a new rear deck on a single family home in R one district at four oh one Polaris Court. So Steph, go ahead and give us the, the rundown and then we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you. So start here, notes the application area. Note that a lot of this is very deeply residential in this area. You can barely point out any streets that are not solely residential. Newbury is the closest one here. This is what was submitted in your packet. Little hard to see. It is showing that the twenty-five foot rear setback can be met for a new deck addition off of this corner and it's showing that it cannot be met at these two points here. But it does not tell exactly how large that encroachment will be. So we would need to get some clarification on that from the applicant themselves. They also supplied this that has the measurements of the deck itself. This is flipped around. Whoopsie, not on the right angle either. So I think this is the best reference point for you because it's showing that this rear property line in the rear setback area here. I did receive one opposition from the rear neighbors. I do have something that they'd like right, right into the record. It is quite lengthy. I can read the whole thing or I can summarize at your, at your discretion, Chair.
Let's go ahead and read it since it's in opposition, I'd rather get that and not have anybody feel like we paraphrased that. So let's do that in a bit though. I'll do that at that appropriate time, if that's okay, Steph?
Absolutely.
Okay. And fair to assume on this, the house is diagonal, right?
It's like this. Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanna make sure I was seeing it correctly. Okay, any questions for Steph before we get to the applicant's board members? Okay, who is here to currently on the call to speak for this, the application? If that is Sam Pavlik, just make sure you unmute.
I'm Sam Pavlik, the property owner.
Hey, hey, thanks for being here, man.
Sure.
Great. Let's go ahead and jump in. So walk us through the application, the, the reason for the appeal. Again, kind of hitting on those three, three questions that you have in the application. That's really critical for those that are on the call for us.
Well, I wanted to, I, I wanted to for quite some time to add a deck on the back. And as you can kind of see by the, the photos, it's a bit of an irregular lot. So that makes it very difficult to put a proportionate deck on the back. I'm not looking to build a big grand deck, just something that kind of fits the property. And with the way that the property line works, it, it kind of makes it difficult. Between my property line and the, the property line behind me, I would say there's two acres of ravine. It's all wooded and it's probably not suitable for any kind of building. I've talked to my two neighbors. I don't know if they're on the call, Mark and Mary Ellen Voskow at four oh nine Polaris Court, who's in support and Lynn Tealins at four oh four Polaris Court, and she's also supports this. You know, the bottom line is I, I really don't think that this is gonna influence or affect anybody's quality of life. You know, anything like that. It's all wooded. It's, it's very dense. You can't see the houses behind me through the trees. So you know, if it was easier just to put the deck there without the, the variance, I mean, that, that would be the way to go, but I just, we wanted to make sure we did this right.
Okay, any, any other comments?
Yeah, Phil Matern with Classic Renovations. Basically with the house being at a diagonal, you can't build a parallel deck with the property line. So you're, you're bisecting that twenty-five foot setback, which is an issue. You know, you're probably about seven to eight feet on the northwest corner of it, but then it, it, it recedes back into the house where you wouldn't impede that setback. So it's just the way the house is on the property. It's, it's kind of impossible to build something that he's looking for. But like Sam said, there's a ravine. There's at least two acres back here unbuildable. It's heavily wooded. So I, it's not, I don't think it's bothering the rear neighbor, but we haven't heard his opposition, so.
Okay, copy that. Any question, Barbara, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, so a question had already come up. How far is it going to go into that twenty-five foot setback on that corner? What, what is the number?
Well, since there is, we, we don't have an official survey, but we have property corner marks that we strung the line. So on the, so on the, the one, the, the corner on the map there or the, the plot map, you're probably on the right side, which would be the, I don't know, the east side, you're over twenty-five feet for sure. But when you, you string across, you're probably gonna be about eight or nine feet from the property line. And then the far left corner, you, you would not be, you would be with, well, you would be probably, I, I would say that you have about fifteen feet or so to the property line. It, it's, it's hard to tell because we know we don't have a survey done, but we know that we're, even without a survey, we know that we're gonna be reaching that, that twenty-five foot setback mainly because of the way the house is on the property is at a diagonal.
Okay.
I don't know if that answers too many of the question, but we, we know we're, we're within about eight or nine feet to the middle part of the deck to the, to that line where we strung across.
So that's quite a bit. From between twenty-five, it'll go, it's supposed to be twenty-five feet and you're thinking between eight and nine feet?
Yeah, with, out with the deck from the house.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I do have one, but I'll let the board go first. Okay, my, my thought is, again, I feel like in those three step questions, I feel like, you know, obviously we'll have to hear from the, the opposition for public interest. I think it's an interesting characteristic of the lot. So I think that checkbox for me. But I think for me, you know, using the property for its intended purposes, in the alternate discussed in the application, the idea of building a smaller deck is in there. And so what I'd like to hear a little bit more is why the need for a deck of this size? And if you reduced it, why? And why would that potentially not work with your intended use? So I'd like, I'd like to hear from the applicant a little bit more about that.
I think it gets down to proportions. I, I, I think that if you had a smaller deck, I mean, we could certainly do that, but I think that it, it really wouldn't suit the house and it wouldn't be exactly what I'm looking for. And like I said, I, I really don't think that whether it's small or big, it's gonna affect anybody around me. And as I, I said, I have two neighbors in support of it. My previous alderman, Tom Dewain, was said it should be no issue to get a, a, a variance for this. So I think that it's just about being pragmatic and doing the right thing. It doesn't make sense to put a, a, a smaller deck on there. If, if it doesn't really fit the, the scope of the, or the footprint of the property, I guess.
And I would think as well that, that the smaller depth of the deck, if you brought that whole thing in, you would still, I mean, you're cutting the corner already to try to create, create some of that gap in. And even if you took that entire section off, the corner is still gonna run in where you flattened it into that. So you'd basically almost have to eliminate the deck. Is it, would that be?
Correct, yes.
The requirement?
I'm sorry?
You in order to meet the requirement in that one corner on the the, you know, the north, I guess, corner, you would almost have to just eliminate the deck altogether to try and make it anyway, correct?
Correct. It's it just wouldn't be as feasible, I guess. Okay, the best way I could say it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Is there any other questions for the applicant before we get to the the email? Okay, Steph, let's jump into the email and then I'll ask if there's anybody on the call for or against as well, but we'll start with the email you you gave.
Okay. Um, they're discussing the string, which is where they had marked in their backyard. So the string supposedly marking the lot line seems to be inaccurate. The contractor sketch seems inaccurate on the city webpage photo. For example, the west property line on personal twenty-one dash thirty-eight one six shows the line running through the roof of the owner's house. The variance request does not say how much impedes a setback. It looks as though the intended deck would be within ten feet of the lot line, which would be a significant impediment on the setback. Without a proper property survey and a marked line, the markers at the corners and possibly at the high point of the line, it would be impossible to determine the amount of. Impediments that the new deck would entail. There has been some longstanding confusion about the exact location of the lot line between the elevation changes. The original builder of the house should have gotten a variance because a portion of the house is only approximately ten feet from our lot line. If, in fact, the variance is asking for a tenth foot or less setback, we feel it would infringe on our property. One could assume that setbacks were established for the common good of all property owners. There appears to be plenty of space to build a large deck without impeding the setbacks. As a property owner most impacted by the variance, we oppose granting the variance. It would seem that the best resolution would be an official land survey and building the deck accordingly. At that point, there'd be no need for variance. Thank you, Glenn and Mary Hansen.
Okay, thank you for reading that. My interpretation of that for the board, and I'm sure you guys can all. Interpret as you are, but it really comes down to, you know. No matter where that survey is going to be, if this deck is to be built, it doesn't matter if it's eight, ten, twelve. You know, so for me, spending the time to get a survey sounds like potentially an issue. For the future, but really, even if we got an official survey. There's gonna be a variance, right? And to me, so I I think that's. How I'm interpreting that. I'm not saying that there's not validity to that individual's opposition or anything for the record. But no matter what, even if there was a survey, it's still gonna show up. Back here for the same thing. It'll just be seven feet, eight feet. We would just know a more exact number. And I'll leave it up to the board to decide whether or not we we want that exact number. Any other persons or people on the call that is for or against this variance? Is that Mary, Mary? Okay, go ahead and unmute. You're not unmuted yet, Mary. Not yet, Mary. Got unmute again.
How's that?
That very good.
Oh, good. So quick. There was another comment sent to Stephanie. It may have come in late from another neighbor on Swiss Hill. Can I read that?
I actually don't know how that works, Steph. I would think that it needs to be officially submitted, correct? Or that individual would need to be here, correct?
I will check my email and see if I have anything from them. Typically, our plan commission, anyway, people are allowed to give. Statement on other people's behalf, but you don't have to consider it as testimony because you can't validate that what's from that person.
Yeah, okay, Mary, let's go ahead and but before I forget, I'm sorry, name and address for the record.
Mary and Lynn Hansen, three seven seven Swiss Hill Drive.
Okay, and Mary and Lynn, was that the the email that you sent in as well? Hanson, I remember. Okay, did I interpret your email incorrectly? I didn't realize you were on the call since the email came through. But really, it comes down to a survey and knowing that exact amount. Is that a fair assumption of what it was? I don't want to speak on your behalf. I didn't know you were on the call.
Yeah, that that's a good portion of it. There is, just in in looking at the sketches and. Paperwork that was submitted with the request for variance, there seems to be enough room if the deck. Were located a little bit more to the right as you look at the picture to put in, you know, a big deck. What we see there is about an eight hundred square foot deck proposed. Six twenty-five plus an extension, something like that. There's a, there's a nice little valley between our houses during the time when the leaves aren't on. Actually, we can see. Mr. Pavlik's house quite clearly. And the lights shine down or whatever. His house is a little higher in elevation than ours. And I'm sure it's a nice view look down, but looking down in our personal lot. It's really not. Anywhere close to two acres. It might be about an acre as we stated on the application, but. Having a deck near the edge of the property, looking down in there seems to be kind of. Well, I want to say that I don't have the right word overpowering or. Imposing. Certainly, we don't have anything against the deck. You know, it's great. I have several out the back and so on. It's just my concern is that since there was already an easement or a, you know, variance granted to build that house there. And I I I think I'm correct in assuming that Mr. Pavlik has lived there since childhood. We've been here since nineteen ninety and. You know, you get you get the view and whatever and they have glass, a glass wall that looks out over that. It just seems that to change that variance that much. Really impinges on our property there. Yeah, it may not be buildable without some serious construction or whatever, but it's. It certainly is usable. We gather firewood. We have a small, you know, wildlife group that hangs out in there and so on. But I'm I'm also concerned about down the road if it would impact our resale value, that sort of thing to have a deck edging up on there. It isn't like we are in a downtown urban area where you're forced to be that close to the lot lines. And the twenty-five foot setback, I'm sure was established to continue to be to maintain some sort of a buffer between properties. And it seems. It seems fitting that it would be maintained. I I think, Mr., I'll see. The the contractor there, I I would guess that he's probably right. Eight or seven feet from our lot line. It may be less if, in fact, the survey shows that the line was closer because it runs. Very close to the corner of Mr. Pavlik's house there. And. I just, you you know, it'd be great to have a nice big deck. Maybe if they moved it over a little bit or something, they could. Could manage that twenty-five foot setback without too much of an issue. Just the deck wouldn't be directly behind the. The living room or what appears to be the living room of the house. Stephanie, did you hear? Did you find your email, an email, an additional email?
Nope, I don't have any emails in my inbox right now.
Okay, there is. His name is Mike Smith. I don't know if you can search Mike Smith.
I don't I don't have any emails regarding the Board of Appeals that haven't been already addressed.
Okay.
Okay.
His his concern, and I would, I would, I would double it. He says, we are established. We have a long established neighborhood. Mature neighborhood that.
I can't hear you. I'm sorry. I can't. You stop.
Us?
Yeah, now I can hear you again.
Okay, he says, we live in established, and I would echo this. We live in established mature neighborhood. And he would be against it would alter changes. He also says that the size of the deck seems quite large in terms of the neighborhood. But that's just, you know, another neighbor.
Okay, thank you for that, those comments and everything. Barb, I see your hand raised. Let's jump in and let you have the floor.
I just have a question for this until the last couple here. So I went out and observed and. The back of the property seems to fall off pretty abruptly. It's it's all wooded. It doesn't seem to be, I I couldn't see a house. Even anywhere near behind it. So I just need you to help me understand why this would impede on. Your home when it seems to be so far away from.
Mostly, the reason you couldn't see the house is because of the heavy foliage due to the trees. You're right, it does fall off. Our house is approximately two hundred. Forty feet from that line. And in the summertime, you know, it's real heavy foliage and now you you can't see it, but in the. Hey, it seems like eight months of the year when the leaves are down or falling. We can see their house quite clearly. And as a matter of fact, the lights in my living room or a living area, I should say, like a chandelier shine right into our bedroom. And our bathroom windows. Go. I I see he's shaking his head. I guess I should invite you over to come take a look sometime, but.
The fact of the matter is. I don't have a chandelier.
Whatever ceiling, ceiling lights or whatever it may be, you have a great.
Thing I want to mention.
Sam, real quick, hold on. So again, just reminding everybody again, I understand it's talking about your properties or maybe there's things that are maybe perceived. Differently for people, but we want to keep the dread, think, uh, think like a court. You're speaking to the to the panel. So I'll come back to you, Sam, and I'll let you have some some additional thoughts. So just again, try to keep the comments and everything directed towards board versus the property owners, and then we'll give him opportunity to speak on those notes. Just take some notes, Sam, and we'll come back.
There is, there is a good deal to drop off in behind his house there. And that's true. Like I say, if if you build a deck right to the edge, you're looking down into our little valley there. And as I said, it kind of imposes over there.
Okay, did that? Did that get what you needed, Barb? Do you have a follow up?
Yes, I guess it did. It's it's just that one probably would probably use the deck during the times of the year when there is the most foliage. So, you know, I'm just trying to understand why, but that's all I need for right now. Thank you.
And I might add that the twenty-five feet of deck would make it that much closer to our house. If you hold on the deck, they would be closer.
Steph, do you mind bringing up the the drawing again that we have? Of the the lot? I know I have in my packet, but I just want to kind of talk through it. Is there anyone to zoom in on that a little bit? So I'm I'm having a hard time seeing in this image is. Where it says thirty-three and then that red line comes down. I think it's a G. Is it a sixty-one or a G one? What is that on the left? Is that? Six oh, six feet. Gosh, okay. Yeah, of course, it's six feet. That makes so much sense. Where that red lot straight line comes down off of the the little kind of diagonal line there, is that the the right where your cursor is? Is that the house right there?
This area here, so this whole outline.
That's the house.
Where the red line comes down on the corner, is that where the deck meets the house?
This portion right here would be.
Boom, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to get my my bearings. As well. So wait, I mean, it is coming in closer with the deck from from the house, right? Do you know, happen to know, again, I know that there's a debate about the lot line. It, do we know what the house currently sits roughly towards the lot line without the deck?
Are you asking one of us?
I'm asking the applicant. Sorry, I should have included. I apologize.
I would, I would say. I don't know about sixty-five feet. It's hard to tell without the survey, but about maybe without the deck from the. From where the garage meets the house where the corner of the deck would start, you go out twenty-five, another, it's probably about sixty-five feet possibly. It's hard to be accurate without that. That survey, but you know, we did string a line from what we thought from the one. Property post all the way back. And it was at least. It was at least sixty some feet from the house out, which would have made. Which, I mean, on that corner meets the meets the code, meets the zone.
This I just did very quickly. This is not an accurate representation based on a survey, but these lines were previously surveyed. And I believe that this is the corner of the closest piece of the property to the backyard. Is that correct?
Okay. Yeah.
Yes, that looks correct.
Yep.
That's great. That's exactly right. And I see your hand, Corey. I'll jump into you in one second here. That's what I was looking for. And Steph, it was mentioned also, and maybe you have this or not. But it was mentioned as well that there was previously granted variance for that 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 I'm guessing that specific house corner. Do you do you know that?
I do not know that. They take on this application, unfortunately, so I don't have any of that ground research.
But that would make sense, though, right? If the whole thing needs to be twenty-five feet off, and that is in theory twenty-two point five ish, that it's it's tight there, correct?
It is tight. I would, it's probably on the ground at twenty-five feet exactly, if not less.
Okay, great. Okay.
May I, may I say something?
One second, real quick. I'll come back. Don't worry. Let me get to Corey. He had his hand raised virtually.
I I was just looking at it and I was wondering, so the back left corner of the house on the map, will the deck extend past that point? Like in a parallel?
If you can kind of see, we've tried to to make the deck. Be as far back from the property line and as an angle as we could to try and accommodate as much as we could.
Yeah, that's the garage on the left there, the the furthest closest point?
No, the garage is on the right.
The garage is on the far right.
Yeah, that's why we can't really move the deck.
That we can't move the deck over to the right because the garage is there.
So the left side where the deck is, that's the house, the the closest point to the property line.
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
I was looking farther more up to the left even further, like, because it seems like the house extends, oh, yeah, to the left more like that line right there.
Yes, correct.
That point on the far left, the extend right there. So the deck won't go beyond that point, which is probably where the variance was approved previously because that's probably within. Eight feet, I would say.
Yes, okay. If I if I remember correctly, the house, the house was built in nineteen seventy-eight. And Mr. Hanson is correct. I moved there, I believe it was nineteen eighty-eight and I I purchased it from my parents in two thousand and four.
Tommy, are you speaking because you're muted?
Hey, I keep getting this one hard. I think it's working and I don't. My kids are here and so I don't want them noising up. So forgive me, Barb. Thank you for that. The, is there any other people on the call that want to speak for or against this variance before we get to kind of final comments from the the individuals on the call? Okay, Sam, I gave you, I said I give you the opportunity to kind of address a couple of things, and then we'll have some board discussion, maybe some follow up questions. I know that I'm gonna say Mary, but you had maybe a thought as well. So we'll start with Sam and we're gonna marry and then I will will do some board discussion.
Go ahead, Sam. I did. I just want to say I respectfully disagree that this is gonna be an impediment or even really that noticeable from from the other property. You know, I I heard some of the things they mentioned. I also would like to bring up the fact that a couple of years ago, they shot two deer illegally back there. And that was a big issue because it was near my son's bedroom. So I don't want this to become adversarial, but like I think that there's some bad blood and I think that there's not a very. Legitimate reason for for the the, or even neighborly reason for this objection.
Okay, thank you, Sam.
And I would welcome any of you committee members to come out again and take a look with me and really take a look at it.
Okay, thank you, Sam. And then Mary, do you have any other final comments?
I do. First of all.
I forget names. It just says.
Man and Mary. I do.
Before we, before we jump in, I will say while it was made, so I'll give you the opportunity to to address it. The the deer situation totally get that's probably an issue, not necessarily super relevant here, but. Obviously, he said it, so I'll let you address it, but not relevant.
I I I need to address it because he's, he is insinuated that I did something illegal. I did not.
I just want to make sure that we don't spend time on the call.
I understand. I don't think it's relevant to the issue.
Make it a quick address.
We did. I did speak with the alderman. He came over to talk with me about it. I showed him where I'm three hundred feet or more. From the other properties and I had permission from the people in front. I did not do it illegally. But that's not relevant for the for the issue at hand.
Any other comments on the the application in the variance? Okay, let's go ahead and move forward.
Oh, I have one question, if I may. I I don't know if you have the. The particular rules about things right at hand there. But I am wondering, what are the rules for fencing a side yard? I think that property line would be considered my side yard. And I'm just wondering if, you know, things are if things get so that we have to, you know, repair some sidelines or whatever. Can I put up a six footer and eight foot fence along my property line? I don't know.
I think that that's something that that Steph can can talk about. I do know that people put up fences in the back of the yard. There are, you know, obviously requirements on height, things like that setbacks and such like that. So my answer is obviously, yes, you can put fences up. Would I be able to tell you exactly what those are right now? Steph potentially could, but I don't necessarily know if that's something you cover right now, but
Fair enough.
Unless I'm wrong, Steph, the answer is yes, correct? Yeah. Okay, great. All right. Any board discussion? Go ahead, Barb.
I was looking at the the questions.
By the way, is it okay that I keep calling you Barb or would you rather prefer Barbara?
Oh, you can call me either one. It's fine with me. Okay. So the, it does seem that there are some physical conditions unique to this property. I'm looking at the way the home had to be built because of the way the property lines are and I am hard pressed to find it to be contrary to the public interest based on the testimony I heard today. Others may disagree. As far as unnecessary hardship, I'm not quite sure about that because if, you know, if you don't have a bathroom, if you're you have an outhouse and you have to add a bathroom and that would get you close to a lot line. Well, you need to have a bathroom in house, but do you need to have a deck on the house? So I would like the people on this community have been on it a lot longer than me to maybe help me understand that part portion of it. But the other two questions I felt adequately in my mind feel I can vote yes on this. But I don't know about the first one, the unnecessary hardship.
Okay, and thanks for being honest about the not knowing. That's good. Tom, can I call upon you?
Sure, I'm a little reluctant to move forward without having the dimensions. I don't like giving a generalized variance and and not really knowing what we're dealing with, so I would consider moving it for postponing it next time around for them to get a survey so we know what we're dealing with. But at this point, I would not vote to approve with the unknown factor here of the lot lines.
Okay, and any since you're a veteran here, any comments for Barb here in terms of her question in terms of deck use and intended purpose, right? That third question that talks about, hey, you know, I want to build on my property. Does a deck qualify as an intended use for you?
It it seems a little bit of a stretch to be honest with you as far as whether it's necessary or not.
Okay. Steven, do you have any thoughts?
Sorry, Mr. Trapp to sit out this one. This is the one I'm recused from.
Oh, whoops, sorry. We're down to three, so I'm going to call Cory in on this one, just so we have a fourth vote. I know we don't need it, but I'd like it. So Cory, I'm going to have you jump in on this one. Do you have any thoughts, Cory? Obviously, you've been listening.
I think the biggest thing kind of similar to Tom, I'd like to know the specific dimensions. And also, I'm just curious. I mean, yeah, it doesn't make sense to say build a deck over by the garage. But it certainly could fit in that range area if you like had an extension to it. So I'd almost wonder about like an alternate idea as far as like what it would look like there if it would fit the dimensions or even if it would look better there. But I'm I'd probably be similar to Barb where two of them make sense, but I I'm wishy washy on number three.
Would you guys feel a little bit more firm on that if the dimensions of the deck changed to to be more accommodating versus less accommodating? Barb, go ahead.
Oh, I feel that no matter what, it's going to be closer than twenty five feet. So we already know that it's already going to be closer. So is there a potential for it to be slightly smaller than than what's on there as a compromise? Because no matter what, I don't feel that I need to know the exact right now because I already know no matter what it is, we're going to have to grant a variance on it. So it that that doesn't matter as much, but what about having it come back slightly smaller? I guess I don't know. Do we ask about that? Tell me, I'm not sure the procedure.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's, there's obviously lots of options we can, we can provide here, you know, more discussion. Obviously, Tom is leaning towards more of a no vote. Needing more variant, more information that gives more potential for compromise or exploring alternative. So that is something that we could do is is vote to say, hey, come back in a in a month. Let's get maybe the alderman's thoughts on it, get them on the call, get there. I'm on the record. Maybe there's potential compromise between neighbors. So I mean, there's, there's so many options we can, we can do. I think it just comes down to to where we're going to land as a board.
One more question. So currently back there, do you have like a patio or pavers or like how do you use that space currently?
Right now, there's just a slab and I there's an old bench that I was going to have removed there. That's all that's there. And I have a little sandbox for my son.
Okay.
I will kind of give my thoughts here. I I understand there is obviously public interest that that is not positive about the option here, but I think the unique characteristics of the lot, you know, in my my feeling kind of supersede those different things, obviously with the house and that left corner being encroaching already. It's just, it's a corner lot in a way, right? Not a corner in the sense that, you know, a corner, but whatever it is, you know, in that cul-de-sac. And so I feel like the unique properties of of the lot creates some some issues. And I think that's what we're here to do is deal with the abnormal ways that cities are built. I think second to that, I I would say a deck is something that people should be able to build onto their houses as an intended use, you know, does it need to be, you know, an aircraft carrier? No, but I do think individuals that own property or own a house should be able to build a a deck on their property. Now, that's where I was kept questioning the the size. Does it? Does it need to be that? I don't know if I've established a need for that size. However, to Barb's point, even if they reduce it right a bit, does that satisfy the public interest a bit? Does that satisfy needing not needing a variance? No, it doesn't. But what it might do is create maybe a compromise if it was a bit smaller, and I'm not quite sure we're in a position on this call to come up with that compromise. So I'm open for either, you know, kicking it thirty days. If the applicant is open to that, that way Tom can be satisfied. I'm open for taking a vote tonight because I think it'll be close. So I'm open to either what we would like to do.
I'm if can I can I speak to the committees?
Go ahead, Sam.
I just, you know, I'm open to compromise. And like I said, I the design of this deck is to be as far away from the property line as possible. I'm just concerned that that there's not going to be a compromise that whatever I come up with is going to be be objected to for no real reason.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. All right. Board, where are we at? I'm going to call kind of go down the the horn here, whether we want to or we can just take a motion.
I mean, if it were up to me, I would move to approve it tonight. But you know what? I'm the new person, so I'll just let someone else decide first.
Yeah, Tom, you're pretty firm on on where you're at. You want more accurate mentions and stuff like that. If it comes back with the same measures and it still needs a variance. I guess I don't want to speak for you, but if it's still encroaching that measurement still matters.
I think it does because it kind of gives a parameter of how how much of a variance are we giving? You know, are we going where, you know, are we doing an aircraft carrier or a destroyer, right? So well, I guess I I would like some notion of, you know, what are we, what are we really approving?
Yeah, okay. Steven, where? Oh, you're out. That's never mind. Forget you not not forget you, but moving on from you, Cory.
I think the dimensions themselves may not matter overall because it's still a variance. I have a similar situation in my house where, yeah, in the summertime, it's nice and full and everything. I can't see the neighbors. But yeah, in the wintertime, all my neighbors are up on a hill and they see down on me. So it's, it is an odd situation, but most people aren't on their decks during those seasons that much. So is there something making sure that like, I heard the comment with regard to the light before, is there a way to take care of some of the situation like that? So I mean, I'm I'm leaning more to an approval.
An approval? Man, that makes me swing. If I'm being honest, where my gut is right now, and if the applicant is open to this, I am, I am interested in maybe delaying for thirty days, maybe not specifically for Tom reasons, but I think it what it does by delaying for thirty days, if you're open to it, is what it does is it allows potentially the opportunity to satisfy Tom, which is one more board member. And for me, you know, public interest is super important to me and and I want, whether you can get there or not, you know, working through an alder, so there's not, you know, direct conversations or whatever. But I do think you know, looking at the size of the deck, you know, knowing those specific dimensions, being a little bit more specific with what what the use is would firm up things for me because right now I'm feeling a little gray and I could be swayed, but I'd rather be firm, especially when there's maybe opposing views. So that's where I'm leaning. If there's a motion there to to delay. Ask the applicant first. Is the applicant open to potential delay or would you rather have a vote tonight?
Well, I mean, I I'm open to delay. I just, my thing is, is I guess to to the other gentleman's point, I'm not going to be using the deck in the winter. And whatever light is being seen is already there from my house. I don't have chandeliers in my house, so I don't know where that was from. I just think that pragmatically and common sense wise, as I think the Barbara had mentioned, like if it's two feet here, two feet there, is it really worth you know, jumping through all these hoops for that for everybody? Is it worth the time and the effort? You know, I'm happy to compromise. I think that the the footprint and the scale of this deck as it is, we've tried to really make it try and fit as much as we could into the to the parameters of the lot line and any kind of areas given. So we're certainly not trying to build a destroyer, an aircraft carrier. I'm looking at more of a patrol boat right now, to be honest. And I just, like I said, I'm doing this in good faith. I really like I respectfully disagree with with the Hanson's where this is going to impede them. And as I said, you know, the previous alderman, Dwayne was very adamant that that it should happen. My neighbors, Mark and Eric Mariel and Vosco and Lynn Tealins were very supportive of it. So I guess that's what I'll leave it at. But I'm happy to compromise or try and work things out if that's how it has to be.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
I think I'm going to cut comments off now. I think you have six more things to go to. We'll be here till nine. So I think we've heard everything I understand. I understand.
Just the survey. The survey would help a lot.
Okay. All right. So we don't have to close the floor. I'm going to say no more comments unless it's egregious what we're discussing and new facts. I'm going to sit back and see if there's a motion presented here. We've got four, four voting members. A two two does not get it through. Correct, Steph? So we would need a three one. We know that Tom has vocalized that, so it's, we can either move it thirty days or motion to vote and see where I land.
Tom, I think it's on you.
I'm going to make a motion to delay it for thirty days.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Cory. All right. So I have a motion to delay thirty days. And a second from Tom and a second by Cory. Any other discussion before we vote on this?
I don't want to be particular, but there are not thirty days between this meeting and the next meeting. So could you just delay it to the next available meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
So amend, please.
Okay. Cory, you're good with that amendment. So to delay it to next meeting. Okay. Any other discussion? So let's vote on this motion to delay till next month's meeting. So there can be some potentially details worked out, maybe some older involvement. All those in favor, say aye. Any oppose?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a three one vote to delay to the next meeting. And then we'll take up the issue again. Again, I can't say what individuals do. My hope would be, you know, there would be potentially some discussion. Again, reach out to the new alder. See if there's maybe some some facilitation there. If there's a land survey needed, I think that would help with Tom's vote as well. Okay. Thank you for everybody's participation. Pa, you know, for and opposed comments. Again, I know it can be difficult to go through this. We just want to be as thorough as possible. So again, thank you for your time and all the comments. And we'll see you in a month or not a month in next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Okay, so now we are on number two on the agenda, which is not number two. But anyway, appeal twenty two dash zero two zero, Mark and Deborah Schwally. Property owners propose the replacement of the existing driveway with the same dimensions for a single family home in a low density residential district at eleven twenty Eliza Street. Okay, Steph, go ahead.
Thank you. Here's an overall perspective. This is right across from Aster Park. A little bit closer view of the layout. Currently, there's the driveway here leading back to a garage space. This came about from a garage expansion project. They're going to be expanding the footprint of the garage, which does not need a variance. However, in looking to reconstruct their concrete area, it was discovered that they do not have the proper setback off of the side yard, which is required to be one foot. Given this, the dimensions of this lot, it was built as a ten foot wide and they would like to replace as a ten foot wide. Here are pictures of the site as it exists. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Steph. Any questions for Steph in terms of getting your bearings on this? So for me, I always like to be super clear. So basically, you you said it needs to be a one foot variance and currently it would be a zero var, zero foot variance?
Step back. They need a one foot step back from the side.
The side. Currently, it's it's at zero.
They want to reconstruct at zero.
At zero, yep. But it would need one foot and that would then if they did it correctly, would need be nine feet.
Yes.
Okay. That's really narrow. Okay, any other questions? Welcome back, Stephen. Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the applicants who's here to speak for. Oh, I see Mark and Deborah. Hi. Thanks for being here. Go ahead and kind of talk us through it.
Well, the house was built nineteen twenty three by a gentleman named Duchateau. And when you built it, that the back was not on there. There was an addition. That addition was made probably sometime between nineteen seventy three and nineteen ninety by a previous owner based on a note that we found among the blueprints that we have of the house. How the house is built and existed from its origins, we aren't sure. Someone laid the driveway at ten feet. But I can tell you what I I took photos of both with and without the car. And right now there is a construction trailer in the driveway. And if we reduce that to nine feet, there would barely be six inches for that trailer from wheel well to to the edge of the driveway. We sim in the winter, we're driving on the grass because of snow and trying to get in a way. There's, there is not a huge distance between our house and our neighbors. Her name is Eunice. Eunice is not against this. We asked her to write a note. She wrote something simple. It's a part of the record and that I sent to you folks. So we, you see also an original side door. And that we 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 could not use that door. If we go down to nine feet, it it becomes very difficult. Let alone accessing the back garage. We're simply asking and units has no objection to just laying at ten feet so that we can have a new new cement. The other problem is is that we're having slope issues on that driveway back to the house. I've already tried to raise it, but I cannot correct it anymore. We had sure dry out that corrected as much as possible. We just really need to replace the driveway so that we aren't going to have water encroachment into our basement over time.
Great. Thank you for the comments. Any questions or concerns or thoughts for the applicant from the board members? Is everybody voting on? Is everybody voting on this one? I'm going to keep Cory in, um, until Noel comes back. Um, if you're okay with that, Cory? Okay, great, um.
The, the only question I would have would be more, uh, looking at your, at your side door there, I, 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 as current with, I'm actively concerned about your safety going in and out of that door. Uh, those, those steps are not code. They look like ankle breakers, frankly. Um, uh, it's, uh, that, that would be my only comment. I know it's not terribly germane and relevant, but it's, it's, uh, those steps are perceptuous. I know there's only two of them, but, but you have no room there.
Yeah, comment?
Yes.
Um, yes, we agree. That was an original door. I have no, I can't picture how uh, earlier families dealt with that. I don't know. We have no record. All we know is that we do have a back door that we use and a front door that we can use. We see that as an escape route. That's how we look at it.
Good.
And so, that said, we want to keep it. We want to have the ability to get out in case it's an older house. If there's a fire, we want to have as many out, uh, uh, escape routes as possible.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other, uh, comments, questions, concerns from the board members?
Could you pull up a photo, uh, again, Stephanie? Uh, I will tell you, I, I went there. You're right in my neighborhood. And that is a very true, uh, visual depiction of their circumstance. That's not skewed to the left or the right. That's what you're looking at is what they're dealing with, just to kind of affirm the validity of that photograph submission. That's all.
Thank you, and thank you again for visiting the properties. I don't necessarily want to speak on behalf of the board, but I don't know if there's a ton more discussion. I'm not getting a sense of where we're at, but I'm in favor of this. I'll, I'll speak first. Um, and if that's kind of where we're at, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve it. I passed all the questions for me.
Seconded.
Okay, I got a motion by, um, Barb and by Stephen, um, and, uh, any other discussion? Okay, um, all those in favor of approval of this variance request, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, so five, five-zero, yay. Um, you are good to go, so just work with the, obviously with Steph um, and the city on any additional details. Um, and again, thank you for the comments and the time and waiting patiently through the first couple of agenda items.
Thank you for hearing our appeal, and do I email you, Steph, or do you reach out to me?
I'll be in contact tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Of course, and feel free to stay, or and again, if you'd like to go, enjoy the night, please do.
I'm hungry. I'm going to go.
Eat for us. Uh, alright, thanks. Okay, let's go ahead and keep moving here. Um, let me go back to the beginning. Alright, so we just finished that one, so we're on appeal twenty-two oh-two-one, Brittany Piper on behalf of Neufeld Enterprises Two LLC. Property owner proposes additional freestanding sign on a parcel in the general commercial district at sixteen-forty West Mason Street. Um, go ahead and tee us up here, Steph.
Thank you. Um, so this is on West Mason and Military Large Intersection here. Um, this has been the site of a lot of recent redevelopment. And what they are requesting is, uh, variance to allow two freestanding monument signs instead of one. They allow one per street frontage in the C-one district. Um, they did submit some site plans. This is a, an overall site plan that shows the entirety of all three parcels that are in question here, and then a more close-up site plan that has some more of the sign details along with an idea of what the sign would look like. Um, so for just a more perspective, so this is one parcel here, and then the two outlets up front, and they're all owned by the same property owner.
Okay, any questions for the city?
Uh, I, I have one. Steph, could you bring that back up?
Sure.
I'm sorry, if I'm looking off to the side, I, I have more than one monitor, so. The, uh, where is the existing tombstone sign?
Hmm.
I see a yellow mark on, on, on my version of this. On the Arby's and Scooter's plan.
Is supposed to be, there is somebody on the line from the property ownership that can probably speak a little more clearly to this.
I don't think I saw it when it went out there. I, I feel like it's under construction, but.
Um, these lots are under construction currently, but there is one freestanding sign already on, I believe this portion of the parcel.
Wow. They show me two then, because it's really hard to see it.
Isn't the other one not a tombstone? Isn't it much taller, I thought?
It's a high-end sign, yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
And this would be.
So they want that and a tombstone?
Yep, but both are freestanding, so there's only one allowed per lot under the code requirements.
Okay, any other questions for Steph? Obviously, some of this potentially might be able to be cleared up by the applicant. Um, okay, um, go ahead and, uh, if you're on, um, the applicant, go ahead and, uh, walk us through the, uh, the reasons and thoughts for the, uh, appeal.
I actually don't see them anymore. I thought John Leroy was here on their behalf, but I don't see anybody.
Maybe he had to go to plan.
We can move, we can, uh, we're, we're procedurally, I think we can move this one, right? Um, and delay it to the end of the meeting. If no one shows, um, then we can, you know, decide if we need to hear testimony and make a decision, or we can choose, you know, to um, to move it if we, we want. Is, uh, everybody okay with maybe delaying it to the end?
Yes.
Do we need procedurally to amend the, yeah?
Yeah, I, I moved that we amend the agenda and move this, um, item to the last item on the agenda.
Oh, second.
Thanks. Motion to move this to the last item for the evening, and seconded by Tom, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright, great. And we don't have to reapprove their agenda again, do we?
No.
Great. Sometimes that procedural stuff gets a little long. Um, you know, right, Barb?
I do know.
Alright, well, let's jump to the next one. Um, okay, appeal twenty-two dash zero-two-two, John, uh, and Alicia Collegeman. Again, I always apologize for my horrible pronunciation of last names. Property owners propose a driveway expansion for a single home, family home in low-density residential at sixteen Walls, sixteen-hundred Walls Street. Steph, the floor is yours.
Alright, thank you. Um, again, this is another fairly residential area, um, with South Ridge being the, the flag area here. Uh, front view of the property shown here, attached garage, side yard, right here. This is a safe plan of what they're proposing, and I do believe that this is partially installed, though I cannot be sure. I think the applicant's around the line. So this is the new parking area that they're looking for. You can see the fence noted here, which you can see here is where that property line is. And then the edge of the property here, which is also important. So an aerial view from what they're looking to for that expansion area, past the side of that garage, and then the fence is here as a marker for that. We didn't have the exact dimensional information for how much this is setback off of that side property line. Um, but what we have in our code, um, has the requirement that if there is an existing attached garage, that it cannot extend past that, that that would be considered beside yard setback. So this technically would be where would uh, extension would be allowed for something in that side yard. So here are some more photos to show kind of what they've been proposing. I think we've seen a lot of these. But that is the requirement for this portion of the drive would be, this would be the ending point within code. So I don't have the dimensional information past that or how close to the side yard property line it is.
And Steph, my understanding as well is that, that and this is where I get confused sometimes, so, so help me get a little more centered here. This, this doesn't have anything to do with a parking space, doesn't lead, like, you know, when it's going along the side, it would need to go all the way through the back and lead to a back parking area. Does that have to do with any of this as well, or would that change how this is drawn out in terms of allowing? What's there?
That's kind of why did we have that requirement. It's either, you know, with the the side yard setback of the zoning area, or it can extend to the edge of that attached garage, and that's to avoid that being able to then have a drive aisle that could go past the side of the garage if that, if there were enough size for that. I don't have the dimensional information here to know if that would be possible, but yes, that's what that portion of the code is trying to avoid is to have those extended parking spaces that lead to nothing.
Right, but if it did lead to something, would that change anything? Like, if, if the, the concrete went all the way to the back and led somewhere?
Then I would need a separate variance for the side yard. Um, setback here also, there wouldn't be enough space for that, I'm guessing based off the dimensions that I can see.
Yeah, okay. Um, any other questions for Steph? Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant, if you're on the line, um, we'll, uh, we'll jump right in. Is it Alicia?
Yes.
Alicia, alright, go ahead and, uh, take us through the, uh, application and the appeal.
Okay, so as you can see, the additional driveway there, what we're trying to do is to add an additional parking spot. Right now, we have a two-stall, but we always have ruts on both sides of our driveway, especially because of spring and all of the mud from snow and stuff like that, from us parking and pulling in and out of our driveway with snow piles and stuff like that during the winter, and then it's melting and it causing a big slush pile right there. Um, the other part of it is we have three children that are very close in age. We have an almost fourteen-year-old, and then we have twins that are twelve, all boys, and they have vehicles that will be coming up soon, so we need an additional parking spot, and we need to make sure that our driveway is wide enough where when we park during the day, when we park in the evenings that we're off the dry, or that we're off of the road as well as not on our, on our grass, because obviously, as you know, in Green Bay, you can't even park on your grass. So our issue is that we're making ruts on the sides, because when we pull in and out, we have that very, very tight, when my husband and I are parked in our driveway, we have to do it strategically, where one of us who's going to be leaving first has to be on the side closest to our actual house door, so that you don't ding the other door when you get in between, because you can't walk in between the two cars when they're parked on our driveway. We've looked at, and we know that we're allowed to have a two-foot addition on one side, but that doesn't help us with the boys coming up in age, and we need with us getting extra vehicles for them. So that's our main concern. Our other concern is during Packer games, we always have people asking to park in our driveways. We always try to have enough room on our street and our street, because we live so close to the Packer Stadium. We're constantly moving vehicles in and out and trying to get everybody situated, and so the additional parking spot would help with that as well. My husband is here too, John. I don't know if you had anything to add?
Uh, the only thing I have to add is, uh, my wife Alicia and I, we walked, um, we do a lot of walking and we provided, uh, we tried to look for options and lots of them. And with our variance, we provided several different images and pictures of different, um, options.
Different, different ideas that other people have done.
Correct, like lattice work, uh, wood chips, dirt, um, other types of concrete or brick.
Gravel.
Gravel, and none of that seemed to work at all, um, and so.
Looks bad after about a year of, of driving on it.
Right, all that, all that kind of looks like it crumbles. Um, so we felt like, you know, spending the extra money to have a professional piece put in um, would be the way to go.
So, and then I guess to add on to that as well, from where we are, I know, I believe Stephanie was her name. She had said that we had started on the project, and that was true. We did start on the project, and in the, some of the pictures I sent, like the drone shots, you can actually see that we started on the project because we hired a contractor to do it for us. And then as we started, our, um, neighbor came out and he goes, oh, you don't have your permit posted, and I said, uh, hold on, so I went and over and asked my contractor, and he goes, oh, no, I didn't get that. You were supposed to get there. He goes, no, I didn't get that, and I go, oh, well, I thought you said you were going to get that, and he said, oh, I said, don't worry about it, and I'm like, oh, we need a permit for it, and he goes, and I'm like, okay, so he goes, I always work within, uh, city zoning anyway, he goes, so it doesn't matter. And I was like, um, well, we are a follow-the-rules type of people, so we definitely want that permit. So we told him to stop where he was at, which is why our front driveway is completely dug out and all formed in and ready to go, because he was going to pour the concrete, and we're like, stop! So he did not pour the concrete, but like I said, for the past almost two months now, our driveway has been tore up and um, not usable on that side at all, which has been making parking really awesome. Um, but anyways, so come to find out, we are actually, so how he had thought that you had to be two and a half feet off of the property line, no matter what you were doing. And we're actually three and a half feet off the property line if we're going off of the fence in the backyard. It's three and a half off of the property line, so we thought we were all good to go. But now we find we can only have a two-foot variance or a two-foot addition, not the eight foot, so. And then as far as your question on going all the way to the backyard to continue that driveway, we actually have a, one of those cement borders that we put in last year for a flowerbed that goes half the distance of that driveway. And if we would have known last year that we had to go all the way back, we probably would have done that instead of the cement flowerbed. But, um, because of that, we can't go all the way back now without actually digging up all that work that we had paid a different contractor to do. Did that answer all your questions?
No, it's good, very, very thorough, thank you. I love it.
I tried, sorry.
And I, I, and I think I'll say this on behalf of the board too, um, I would, uh, I would love to, to say that it doesn't happen as frequently as it does, but unfortunately, it does happen where your situation with a contractor does happen, and that is unfortunate, and, um, uh, I could speak on all of us, you know, it, it is heartfelt in the sense that these create very difficult situations when, when work is already started. Um, and it, it's not a fun discussion if we go against a denial, you know what I mean? I just want to make sure you know that we, we understand those situations. We see it unfortunately maybe too much, um, so at least I appreciate stopping the work and, and trying to do the right thing, so thank you for that.
But we felt it was better to stop the work than have to dig it all up and do something else and waste all that money, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, any other questions for the applicant from the board? Okay, hearing none, um, I will jump to potential, um, audience um, that wants to speak for or against this, if they're on the call. Okay, hearing none. Um, I will ask the applicant, um, did you happen to speak to your neighbor, um, on facing the house on the right about this at all?
Face, so across the street or right next?
So the driveway, it's always weird when you're on virtual, but if I'm facing the house to the driveway, right, it's going towards the house on the right side where it's, where it's aproning out, the house on the right.
Yep, Bob and Maxine, we have talked to them quite a few times. Actually, they were the one that said, oh, you didn't have your permit posted. So that's where that had come in. And he had said that he was hoping that when his kids were young, that he could do it the same thing, and he was excited that we were actually able to do it, because then he said, if you can do it, I think I'm going to go ahead and do it myself, because he wants that extra as well. Um, so we've talked to them many times since then, because they were wondering why it all stopped and what happened. Um, so he's actually been very nice about it. He's like, I'm not causing any problems. You guys go ahead and do what you need to do. He's just hoping that he can eventually get it done if he needs to do, so, yeah.
We're, we're, we are probably his guinea pigs, and it would make sense, because they have, they have two vehicles, but during the summer, during the summer, they do have a boat, and so, you know, if, if he was interested in doing something similar, it would make sense that he is interested in our guinea pig. Um, but yes, he's the one that brought up the, uh, the idea of the permit. Um, so everything was stopped, and, uh, we are, we are here.
Yep, and we have talked to a couple of our other neighbors as well, and they were, they said the same thing, that they were excited for us to get it, because they know with the kids coming up how hard it was for them to have to shuffle cars and do all of that stuff. So we have talked to our neighbors, and I don't think we've heard anybody say that they were against it, but again, that's here. But again, that's hearsay, take it or leave it, but obviously, nobody else has jumped in to say anything. So, but yeah.
Good, thank you for answering those questions. Um, any other questions? Uh, okay, thank you, and we're gonna discuss as a board for a bit, and we'll see where this goes. Um, was anybody else to visit? I think this one Barb, you'd said you gone to to all of them. Steven, you said you went to all of them. Did you want to have any additional comments in seeing it or thoughts? Barb, you wanna go?
Sure. Well, just really reminded me of one that we just recently denied. And so that made me um, wonder how we could approve it, I guess. I, I thought, I think very highly of this family who wanted to do things right. I love the write up that they stopped working, that they, you know, said, no, no, we have to have, you know, the permit, you must go, you must follow the rules. So they, you know, I I just really admire that about them. Um, so I am hoping that I don't know, I can hear from the more experienced members of this board, because I I, I wasn't able to answer my questions. I, I don't, I didn't feel it was, it's not contrary to public interest. Um, the physical conditions unique to this property that I couldn't find that, and is it a necessary hardship? Well, they have a driveway that goes into a garage, so they can use the driveway. So um, perhaps, but I've only been on a short time, and so I don't know, maybe these have been approved in the past. Just there was one very similar one last time that wasn't. So that's all I was thinking about.
And and just real quick, Steven, before, thank you Barb for those comments again. Um, these are always tough ones, you know, when you're trying to think through it. Um, but I would say, just so the applicant understands, when we go through our training for the board, it's um, it's hard, because you you have to think about the property as its own idea, and it's the use of the property in the sense of how a property can be developed, but not the individual living within it. And I know that sounds a little bit weird, but basically, the idea is this property is gonna potentially turn hands two or three times into the future. And so what we have to consider is, does this property, regardless of the individual use currently, um, the next person is that, is that, you know, all the neighbors change hands? Is that, is that property going to 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 live as its own idea? Um, and so that's what we're considering when we say um, use. Um, it's not necessarily about the individual, but the use of the property, I guess is a better way to explain it. Um, I'm gonna, I'll come back to you Alicia in one second. I'm gonna hear from the other board members, and I'll, I'll let you have uh, another say here. Steven?
Yeah, I, I wanna, I wanna echo Barb's comments. Uh, you guys are doing everything right. Uh, you guys have uh, been very upstanding about this. You should be commended for it. Um, you stopped the construction when your contractor uh, didn't pull a permit. He knows better. No matter what he said, he knew better. Um, and uh, you guys have done everything right, and we've turned this kind of thing down before, and I drove around your neighborhood. Um, a bunch of your neighbors have this exact thing, and they put it in without code, or they put it in before the code existed. Um, the thing that's getting me here is in order for us to be consistent, um, we need to either have that driveway that goes beyond, so you can park a car beyond, and I know you've already done some work there. Um, the decision to have this code was made by the zoning and planning board. If you've got a number of people in your neighborhood who think that the city of Green Bay should be allowing this, I would strongly recommend you contact both your alder and go to the zoning and planning board, because we hit these again and again and again. And the the truth of the matter is, uh, and I'm just gonna be honest with you, I I can't vote for variance for you, because there is no hardship here. Your children don't require cars to live. Um, hardship around the Packer parking is not, does, none of it meets the standard for us to give you a variance, given, in my opinion, given what's here. And I, and I, I'll be honest with you, I feel terrible telling you that, because you're being punished for doing the right thing, and that's wrong. But in my, you know, a- a- as a, as a member of this board, it's not my job to discuss whether or not the planning committee should have made the certenance, is to decide whether or not you meet the tests to to qualify for a variance. And unfortunately, at least in my mind, you do not. Um, which I have to say is deeply unfair. And uh, I'm very sorry for that. Um, because you've done everything right. Um, but the code is the code, and you know, the the house, uh, there's nothing preventing you from using the house as it is.
Thank you, Steven. Those are very candid comments and also heartfelt comments, so I appreciate it. Um, I'll come back to you Barb. Is it, is it a, is it a anecdote?
Yeah, it is. It's like, just to to continue the one that we approved, didn't approve, they actually have to dig out all the concrete. Um, because they already had put it in. It's even, it's way worse, because they put it in and they can't have it. So that could have happened to you guys too, depending on how this ended.
Yeah.
You did the right thing. You did the right thing.
Tom, Cory, any thoughts?
Hi Cory.
No, I, I mean, still relatively new, but I, I mean, I agree, it doesn't meet the hardships or the other pieces on there. Um, it is a little bit different than the one from last week, which I sat in when I had a long variance request, um, where they, they had to basically build it because they had a big motorhome. Was kind of the main reason they were doing there, and also for living situations is what they were planning on it. I mean, you, you want to use it for just parking your vehicles, understandable, but to Steve's, Steven's points, it's, it doesn't unfortunately meet our standards.
And the hardship, again, just a reminder, the board as well cannot be self-imposed, right? So the hardship cannot be something that you're creating for yourself. Um, Tom, any thoughts?
I would just echo other comments by the board that they're trying to do the right thing and are being punished. And I would surely encourage them to see what they could do about changing the variance. That's all.
Yeah, that's something we can do as a board too, when we get to our procedural stuff. I mean, we do see these, right? So we can refer back through staff, you know, to have uh, planning, take a peek at this. You know, we do see this a lot. Um, and they, we've done that in the past when we see certain variances and get council's opinion and planning's uh, opinion on it. Um, uh, do Barb, go ahead.
I was gonna say, and definitely you need to work through your alder, because um, I I as an alder brought things back to try to change um, codes. And so that really would be working through the alder that you have in your district to try to do that.
And that's we, that's weary, correct?
Yeah, it's older weary.
Alder weary. Um, are you familiar with alder weary? Okay, um, you had raised your hand earlier before we get to any, uh, Tom, real quick, sorry Alicia, one second, Tom, go ahead.
That's okay. Is, is there any chance of uh, like deferring this until I get a chance to uh, meet with the alder weary and see what could possibly be negotiated?
Uh, we can leave that up to the applicant. I would think though, if there was gonna be a uh, actual like real look at it, Steph, you can give me a little bit more sideline on this, but I mean, it would have to be more than a three month delay in terms of going through the proper channels to potentially have a, an actual code change, right? It would, it would be significant, correct?
Yes. So anything that comes out of this body that goes back to the planning department, gets run through the staff liaison, which is me for now, and we run a text amendment to change our code, and the text amendment goes to plan commission and city council for approval. And those text amendments can also be referred to us by city council members. Um, or if your neighbors want to band together to pay to apply for a text amendment. So it's, it's one of those three routes. We either get the applications from a member of the public, we get it from an alder, or we as staff decide that it's time to update our code. That is part of our parking code, which is recently updated. Um, but there are always things that come up, and we deal with our inspection division quite a bit on parking, especially residential parking. So those would be the three routes. So I don't know if there's a particular timeline associated with it, other than it does have to go through planning commission, and it does have to go through city council.
My suggestion would be to do all free.
Mine too.
Put as much, put as much pressure on as you can through your, through your alder, apply with your neighbors. And uh, if uh, if someone on this board needs to uh, you know, assist with pushing that forward, I would be willing to assist.
Okay. Um, I'll give Alicia the thought, because I promised you, you had your hand raised, and I wanted to touch base with the board. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Alicia?
Um, it was just to the comment you had made about how the house is gonna change hands. Um, I can honestly tell you that we have actually gone and thought about moving, partly because of our family growing and the boys getting older and whatnot. Um, but because of where we are at in life, we paid off our house last month, so we have, yeah, we have zero interest in acquiring more mortgage. So we, we are definitely staying here now, because I prefer to travel than to get a bigger house and have more to clean. Um, so, so as far as it changing hands, we're planning on, actually, this is gonna be our retirement home now too. We've been in this house for eighteen years now. Some eighteen years, and we don't plan on moving. Um, so it would be for us and our family, and as our family grows, I know my husband has one more question.
I guess I have two. I, Tommy, that's, this is you and the, with the hat. You had a very specific question on the right neighbor. Why did you ask that? Did that individual come and speak to you?
No, no, I just, we, so we have a three step test, right? So public interest, um, hardship, right? And then unique characteristics of the property. So when we are talking about our or doesn't meet our standards, right? Like that was said, um, because the variance is encroaching over there, right? Like, we just want to kind of say, hey, is there a neighbor involved? Is there any public interest that we haven't heard? So for me, it was kind of firming up that idea.
Okay, and then I didn't write down, there was a gentleman that said he either walked or drove around our neighborhood and found a, a, a certain group. I forget who that gentleman was.
That was me.
Okay, so you drove around the neighborhood, and you said you found several of these, which of course, we have seen as well. Um, and so that leads to we're doing the right thing, but we're getting punished. But all, all those other individuals, is it, is it a wrong assumption or a fair assumption that they may have done that without going through this process?
I almost guarantee they did this without going through that process.
Okay.
That's why you're, that's why your contractor didn't pull a permit, because he knew it wouldn't pass. And he figured if he could get it in, nobody would notice.
Okay, thank you for answering that.
And I think another way to answer that too, I mean, it's hard to be certain about that, but different things show up in the appeals process for different things. It could be an applicant um, wanting to do something to their property, but sometimes it shows up in our thing, because someone filed a complaint. And so that individual had no idea, maybe they purchased the property, um, and someone did something prior to them owning a house that didn't fit to code, and someone complains. And so then that property owner either has to correct it, um, and, or they come before us and say, hey, I'd like to keep this, um, and they appeal. So that's option two. Option three is the inspections department drives by, and they say, hey, this isn't to code, and you get a citation, I'm guessing. Um, and then it has to be corrected, or you can appeal. So there's different ways that things end up here. So just keep that in mind as well. We can't speak to um, exactly whether any of those houses were approved. I can tell you um, my, my time on the board, which is probably three years, we've been fairly consistent on these. Um, but that's not to say that the board prior, you know, did make an exception. I'm not, I can't speak on behalf of that. So, anyway, I just, I always love to give as much context to applicants, as, you know, and hopefully that helps them um, understand kind of why things are happening, what's happening. Um, so hopefully that's helpful for you to understand the, the individuals in the neighborhood. It, it could be to Steven's point that they didn't, and the only way they would show up here is, it was either, in that case, it would be a complaint filed or a inspections department coming through. All right, um, any other discussion or thoughts?
Just, are we gonna go for a delay?
Yeah, that was gonna be my next thought.
Okay.
Do we, do we want to delay? And I think if we are, I think we should come up with a timeframe that we think makes sense. And then we need to ask the applicant if they even, you know, want to consider that, because again, sometimes we grant that, and they're like, I, I don't need that.
Let's go first.
Yeah, ask them first. Ask them first if they want it. Like, wait.
Alicia, would you be open, if we, if we take a vote, I can, again, I don't want to speak on behalf of the board, but my, my sense is that it's probably gonna get denied. Um, so if we take a vote tonight, it'll be denied, and then, you know, it's next steps. Um, the other options, it's being presented, because every time you apply for appeal, there's a process, there's a fee. What we can do is, uh, we like to say punt, um, and basically delay a vote um, and give potential time to see if an another solution comes on board. And and in this case, what that potential solution would be, might be hard pressed, but it's worth a shot, would be um, delaying for a period of time, so that maybe alder can get involved, city staff can look at the code. Um, you know, maybe neighbors can get together, since you said there was others that were hopeful, um, and see if there's a group of individuals that can kind of query the, the, the council. Um, but again, all of that comes down to your desire for us to have it be delayed without a potential outcome, and then the driveway just kind of sits where it's at.
Um, I think we're going to, at this point, not, and we'll just go ahead and try to figure out something else to do with it, because it's already all dug up, and we've been dealing with it dug up, like I said, for close to two months now, so we need to get this project somehow, some way taken care of. I'm not sure what we're gonna end up doing now, but uh,
Any tips on how to go to the contractor that put us in this situation from anyone?
Uh, you better not pay him.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we want to put, maybe afterwards, we can touch base, but um, I think Barb spoke to um, a conversation with the contractor, and that permit and working with the CDI is where I would start. But um, again, I want, I want to again say, these are not easy decisions. I try and keep it light on the call, because these things are frustrating, so please don't take my smiles and stuff as not heartfelt, that these are difficult decisions. And again, I think Steven said, um, you know, it, there's no way you can walk away from this and potentially not feel like you're getting punished for doing the right thing. So I apologize for that, and and that's not the goal. Um, um, do we have a motion?
I, I'd like to move, I would, I, okay, we aren't gonna delay, so I uh, moved to deny.
A second.
Okay, so I have a motion to deny the request, um, um, the appeal um, by uh, Barb, and then seconded by Steven. And again, on these, remember, because we're voting to deny, we're voting on the motion, so an I vote means no. And a no means yes. Well, that doesn't necessarily mean yes, it just means you're no against the no. Um, all right, all those in favor of denying the variance request, uh, go ahead and say aye?
Aye.
Anybody oppose the denial? Okay, um, so Noel.
Noel, you're uh,
I shouldn't be recorded as abstaining, as I wasn't here for the discussion.
Yes, yes, we'll pull Cory back out and we'll drop you back in. Um, uh, so the variance has been denied. Alicia, go ahead.
Um, I guess our last question then, since the variance is denied, we would still be able to get a permit and do a two foot addition then, I guess, because that is up to code?
Yes, you can extend to the edge of your attached garage.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and again, thank you for your time. I know it didn't go your way, but we appreciate the time, and again, all the efforts you put in to, to try and do the right thing. All right, we're gonna move on to the next thing. Um, so Cory, as an alternate, um, we'll put you back on the, the bench, we'll drop Noel back in. Welcome back Noel. We'll jump to the next one here. Give me one second. Okay, so we're on appeal twenty-two dash zero two three, Trista Hobbs. On behalf of the Green Bay Police Department, property owner proposes the installation of an eight foot fence around their parking lot in Public Institutional District at three oh seven South Adam Street. Um, Steph, you'll take us through, and I believe we do have also a email for the record as well from the alder. Okay, let's go ahead, Steph.
Sorry about that. Uh, this is for the um, department's building, which is downtown on South Adam Street. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. And the building itself is here, and then there is a large parking area here that's associated with this use. This is only for the rear portion of the parking lot that goes along the corner of Stewart and then on to South Jefferson. This was included in your packet, which gives you kind of the best idea of what they're proposing here. It's an eight foot tall fence around the entirety of this area here. Um, they would have the electric gates to be able to open to access those. They have a flow of traffic represented here. Um, so the various is what they're looking for are for that maximum heights. Um, they can't, they're looking to do eight feet for the entirety of it, which is not allowed within a front inside setback. Um, they also have some vision triangle issues. We do have people from the, um, Department of Public Works that can probably speaks to those specifics a little bit more clearly. But those are marked here on the site plan with the triangles for the entry and exit points. And then also the setbacks for the front yard and the side yard. So the front yard is supposed to be a fifteen foot setback and the side yard would be a ten foot setback. So those are all the infringements, so basically they want to go right up to the property line, eight foot tall, all the way around.
Okay, any questions, um, for Steph before we get to the applicant? And I might have missed this and I apologize, I was trying to find it in my packet because the packet's pretty long, so I was scrolling. Is this, um, fence, so eight feet, but is it, you can still see, you can't see through it?
It, you would not be able to see through it, it's a chain length, but it has the vinyl slats within it. So similar to what Golden House has on their current facility, they have a chain link with the vinyl slats, this would be like that. I do not have a proposed rendering of what it would look like, um, three D. That is the description I've been given.
Okay, all right, any questions for Steph? Okay, let's go ahead and jump into the applicant and let's hear. Um, sounds like we'll have a couple of different people jumping in, so who's gonna be first here?
I can be first if that's okay.
Great, thanks, Trista.
Yep, uh, so we have a few different things happening, like Steph was saying. Um, essentially, the police department wants to protect their assets, um, both personnel and, um. Inanimate, um, through the history of the police department. They've grown, they've developed, they have more squad cars, they have more tactical vehicles, um, that they risk damage to. Um, if they don't have them secured. So they're looking to put in this eight foot fence with the privacy slots to help secure their, those assets. And the substantial investment that the city has in that department. Uh, we looked at several different options of trying to work within those setbacks. But what we found is that we significantly reduced the amount of parking that they then would have. Um, and they're already strapped for parking spots there. The vision triangle, um, in my opinion, it's not, not really a, an issue there. The one driveway that we do not meet the vision triangle is an entrance only. So no one's gonna be pulling out of that parking, um, that parking lot from that driveway and, and have an impeded view. It's, it's entrance only. And I guess that's, that's the gist of it. Um, i- if we try and, and get that eight foot or ten and fifteen foot setback, we're losing close to twenty or thirty parking stalls by doing that.
I have a question for Trista.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so for, i- i- is there more than one vision triangle that is of concern?
No, just the one.
Just the one, okay.
So those are the ones on Stewart Street?
I had seen more when she showed more.
Yeah, there's two on Stewart and there's two on, uh, Jefferson, so which ones are the ones that include him?
I, I had them all drawn on there, there's only one on Stewart that we don't meet.
Oh.
Because the fences is at the, the back of curb, um, for the parking lot on the other ones.
Now it's clear to me, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I know there's others to speak on this, or, and this is kind of that weird thing being virtual. Uh, are, Tris, are you speaking on behalf of the application or is there like a, a collective? Cause I do see Kevin, Officer, uh, Wirth, I believe is how you said, and Officer Davis here. So are you all speaking as a collective for this before we get to potential others that might not be for or against it?
Yes, I would say we're all collectively speaking for it.
Officer Wirth, what is it?
It's Warwick, uh, but I'll, I'll defer to Chief Davis, uh, for him to go first.
Okay. Oh, and I screwed up Chief Davis, see, I'm so, I'm so bad at this. Thank you, Chief Davis.
For that, and for the record, I'm Chris Davis, I'm the chief of the Green Bay Police Department. And there, really, uh, as you probably know, I came here from, uh, from another state. About nine months ago and literally one of the first things that I heard from our police officers. Was the desire to have a fence around where we park patrol cars. Um, you know, officers have just a ton of equipment that they have to carry out to their cars. Uh, and just encountering random people and I'll briefly go through some examples of some concerning behavior. Just in the last few years that we've seen there. But, you know, officers have all this equipment to take out to their cars, that's probably not the time when you're encumbered with all this stuff. To be approached by someone especially, you know, in, in difficult circumstances. Certainly we're approached by the public all the time for asking questions and needing service. I myself got to, got introduced pretty early on when I got here to a fellow walking through our parking lot in the middle of the day drinking. Like some kind of beer out of an open container. Um, right past a whole row of marked Green Bay police vehicles. As you know, nationwide, police departments over the last few years have experienced civil unrest directed at their facilities. I come from an organization that experienced quite a bit of that and sustained quite a bit. And in probably the seven figures of damage to police facilities from civil unrest. Uh, and obviously having vehicles unsecured is a risk there. The other risk though is to the safety of our employees' personal vehicles, we're a twenty-four seven operation. And I know that there have been incidents in the past historically where employees' vehicles have been tampered with. Um, and so what this becomes really is a liability issue for the city. Uh, being aware of the fact that we're maintaining a police facility without secured parking and having people coming and going twenty-four seven. So it's a pretty important issue for us, it seems like something that would be fairly mundane and not one of the first things that a new chief would get to. But I'm very concerned about the safety issues posed by this. And I don't think these are hypothetical concerns, just in the last two years, we've had, you know, I'm looking at a list of. Probably nine different, just documented incidents over the last few years. Everything from people walking through the parking lot with open beers, like my friend last fall. Uh, all the way to people going in and looking in vehicles of. City vehicle that was struck in that parking lot by someone who wasn't supposed to be there. Um, and the, the last thing that I will say about this is just a quick Google search. Of attacks on police facilities will reveal, here's one that happened in Philadelphia. Uh, where officers got involved in an officer involved shooting after a couple of them were attacked in a facility there. Um, a couple of them in California, very unfortunate incident, just right down the road in Milwaukee. Where a fellow came in to the, to the building actually and fired at officers. So this kind of thing does happen and, you know, we realize that this fence design is not necessarily the most visually appealing. But the, the last piece of this is, we had to work within the resources that the city has. The city has very limited resources, I know that there's lots of really good discussion going on about a new public safety facility. I'm certainly a big supporter of that, but a facility like that is beyond the city's means at this point. And we have a fairly important safety issue for our employees going on right now. And so, you know, the proposal that you have in front of you, no, it's not the nicest looking fence that we could build. We would love to, to build something that's more aesthetically pleasing to, to the neighborhood. Certainly we're respectful of where we are in downtown Green Bay. But this is the best that we were able to do with the resources we have to solve what's, what we see as a very urgent problem. And to prevent potentially a very bad thing from happening as we've seen, seen happen in other organizations. Even right here in this state, that is entirely predictable and is therefore preventable. And so with respect to all that, again, I certainly understand people's concerns about the appearance. And I wish there was a, a more appealing way for us to meet this need, but we, this, it's just beyond the city's means at this point. And so this represents the best that we can do with the resources we have. And that's why we are respectfully asking that you grant us the variance in this case.
Thank you, Chief Davis. Um, okay, and then, um. Help me get the last name right, I've met you before, but I, last name is escaping me, so Officer Warwick?
Andrew.
Yep, yeah, that, that's correct, um, and Chief Davis said it, um, perfectly. The only thing I'd like to add is that when we designed the fence with, um, the help of the engineering department. That if the new public safety building would ever be built on the grounds, we took that in consideration. Where there would be minimal impact on, on the fence, where we would use the same existing fence. So that we were not, um, wasting any money or any time and dedication of this fence.
Okay, great, um. And is there anybody else on the call that is part of the collective here? I see Brad BI raising his hand. Is he with the, with the, the, okay, go ahead, go ahead, Brad.
Hi, I'm Detective Brad Biller, uh, if you can hear me. You hear me okay?
You can hear me fine, yes, thank you.
I'm just gonna, all I want to do is just add some numbers of what Chief Davis said. In twenty twenty-one, we had three hundred and fourteen law enforcement officers who were shot in the line of duty. Uh, a hundred and nineteen of those were shot in ambush style attacks. There were ninety-five ambush style attacks and a hundred and nineteen law enforcement officers shot. Uh, that's a hundred and twenty-six percent increase from the previous year. So the, the sentiment around the United States is that we are not real favorable with people right now. And I know we talked about, the chief talked about a lot of the expensive equipment that we have. But paramount is our people, our people are the most expensive pe- uh, uh, equipment that we have. And the reason that we need this fence, uh, the main reason is because of our people, in my, in, in my opinion. Um, I know he talked about Milwaukee, um, but if you look, look just back at Appleton. In, uh, March of twenty twenty, that's a little over two years ago. We had an Appleton police officer stabbed in their parking lot. He was confronted by a guy and stabbed twice in Appleton, that's thirty miles from here. Um, so for me, that's the most paramount thing about getting this, this fence to protect our people and our equipment. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you for those comments, um, is there anybody else, um, Trista, that is part of the, the group that is kind of presenting the case here?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, um, before we get to potentially anybody else on the call for or against. Um, is there any questions for the collective, I'll call it, uh, that is here from the Alder or from the, the board?
I have a number, actually.
Okay, um, so.
Take it down. Yep, so I'll, I'll, I'll start out with saying, uh, in terms of the, the safety of the officers and the, the reasons why you're doing this. Uh, there's no argument about that, okay, I don't think that's an arguable point, you have data. And I think that the data shows that, that that is a, is an issue. Um, what I wanted to ask was a, a couple of things, some of them are just practical because I, 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 you know, obviously I'm not a police officer. So I don't understand necessarily how you do business. Um, so looking at the lot, I, uh, when I went down there yesterday and you guys probably saw me creeping around your lot yesterday with my truck. Um, uh, looking at it, there appears to be some garage doors on the, uh, on the main police building there. Is that where you keep the squads or do you keep them in the parking lot?
No, we keep them in the parking lot in that garage, uh, that's an auto servicer area.
Oh, so it's made as.
Right, the only vehicles that we park in there are some motorcycles and, uh, an armored vehicle for the SWAT team.
Okay, fair enough, um, because part of, uh, what you put in the application was saying that you, uh, wanted to make sure that you could load the SWAT team. Without being observed, why would you not extend the fence to include that area?
I think the idea is that we would be able to move both the armor. And we, we don't just deploy SWAT officers from armor. Uh, so you'll have, usually when they go out to do, say, a warrant service or, you know, emergency deployment or something like that. They'll stage a number of vehicles in there, including maybe some marked vehicles and unmarked vehicles. And so being able to stage that, there would be better than just doing it out in the open parking lot.
Okay, and, and only two more things that I promise I'll be done. Um, so, uh, uh, on the, uh, if we go look along Jefferson Street there to the left side is the municipal court building. Yes, um, I assume that's owned by the city. That fence will be pretty much block out almost all of the windows on that side of the building. There's also a handicap parking spot there that I assume is for the municipal court. Since it's all the, it's as far away from the police station as you can get and still be on the property. Are there plans to, uh, make sure that that access is maintained for the court?
Yes, we've talked this over with the court and part of the plan is to allow, they have a small number of people who park there during the day. Was to extend that to them because they have some of the same safety concerns as well, obviously, because of some of the interactions they have with people.
Sure, okay, and then the last thing, um, now obviously the, the plan, you know, if you, if you had to move this within code. Um, the, the loss of, uh, parking spots is pretty unacceptable, I think, I mean, just to, just to get that out in front. Um, that being said, um, perhaps there are some, uh, uh, small changes you could make that would put this closer to code. Uh, without as many, uh, without as many, uh, uh, needs for, for changes. For instance, so you've got the one, uh, you've got the one, uh, side triangle violation, you know, area where you need that. Can you move the, I mean, how far would you have to move the fence to just make that right? Two feet, three feet, we know?
So the, the reason that we have that violation is with these sliding gates. Um, you need about five or six inches underneath it for it to operate. And then on that driveway as well, you have a curb.
Okay.
And so the curb tapers down to where the sidewalk is, closer you get to the sidewalk, the smaller your gap. The, underneath the fence is going to be. So as we move it closer to the parking lot itself, you're gonna end up with a foot or more gap.
I see, okay, so that's not a practical choice, okay, understood. Uh, the other question is, and this one actually is, is I'm a little bit more concerned about, can you tell me why you selected an eight foot fence height? Um, at this particular case, I mean, obviously, you know, old fat guys like me aren't gonna scale your fence. And, uh, maybe skinny guys can get over a six foot, but it would seem to me that, uh, you know, the city does have a. A six foot limit on fences and it would serve your purposes either way. With a six foot fence, uh, if you, unless you have some, you know, argument as to why that you need an eight foot fence. I assume you're not gonna top this with concertina wire or anything.
If I can just mention on that, um, sorry, chief. Uh, either way, the six foot within that setback doesn't meet the ordinance, it has to be three feet to meet the ordinance.
Right, right, but I'm talking about from terms of, you know, not making Green Bay look like an armed camp. So.
Right, and that's, the, the eight foot fence is necessary because, uh, yes, folks. You know, some folks can't get over it, but a lot of people can, I mean, I'm fifty-one years old, I can get over a six foot fence pretty easily. And, y- you know, especially when you're talking about situations where officers are attacked. There's a sizable amount of the population that can get over a six foot fence. Also, you know, like the SWAT armor, that vehicle is more than six feet tall.
Hmm.
Um, and to avoid, what, the last thing we wanted to do was put barbed wire or concertina wire or something like that. I don't wanna, I don't, that goes against a lot of our values as a community resource, right? As your police department, but part of the way to avoid the need for something like that is to have a fence that's tall enough. To stop most people from getting over it, you know, somebody who's motivated enough can pretty easily get over a six foot fence.
Um, fair enough, fair enough, uh, those, uh, those answered all the questions I had on that, uh, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Especially with the hard question.
Yeah, I, I've got a way in on the eight foot fence as well. You, you know, I, we're, we're looking at a situation where we're trying to, to mitigate potential risks. Not, not necessarily actual, you know, threats that are, that are out there today. And even the presence of a fence, heck, even the presence of a little wire garden fence keeps kids from stepping over it. Into the area where you're trying to seed grass or something like that. A six foot fence around a parking lot, um, with, with, you know, controlled gates. It sends a clear, you know, message to everybody, hey, you don't belong here unless you've got the gizmo that gets the gate to open up when you pull up. Um, and somebody climbing over a fence because they're determined to get inside of whatever is fenced off, whether it's six foot or eight foot or three foot. Um, they're gonna be motivated to do that and, um, hopefully be quite visible in their attempt to scale that. And I, I imagine your well surveilled parking lot, you know, even with the fence is gonna prevent, um. You know, somebody having a lot of freedom of movement in there before somebody has a conversation with them about why they're there. Um, it just, it, you know, it's, it is a, it, it, it is something when you're looking at a chain link fence with the slats in it. And you make it eight feet tall and you make it as long as it is in both of those dimensions, it's a, it's, it's a mass.
It's a, it's, it's a mass that is going to be windowless, you know, fairly characterless. Um, and and a real visual challenge in the in the in, you know, to the to the site. Uh, of passerby and 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 residents and 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 I just, we know, wonder if it really is necessary. You know, given what fences generally do to people's behavior. Um, if it's really necessary to go that extra two feet high that whole way and make that impact for folks, um, you know, visually on the street. Um, so I I need to be convinced, um, I guess more. Um, I know there's some, you know, optimal reasons for it. You mentioned the armored vehicle and other things. Hopefully that gets very little action. Um, and uh, and hopefully you've got very few bad guys that are determined to get in there. Um, and and are stymied not by a six foot, but but by an eight foot. But it really is the visual character of that, especially being right up to the sidewalk. Uh, that's got, that's got me really concerned. I I I need to see some compelling reason why we've got to do that.
Sure, and I I agree with you. And this is something that we certainly considered in the design of this project. Because again, we want to be respectful of where we are in downtown Green Bay. And you know, if money were no object. We would find a way to build this that looks better than an eight foot tall chain link fence with with privacy slats. Um, yes, we wish. That we lived in a world where a six foot fence was enough to deter people who want to do harm to police officers. But the fact is, you know, when you look at the stories of attacks on police officers around the country. Unfortunately, here in two thousand twenty two, we live in a world where, again, a two second Google search finds me. Multiple instances of highly motivated people and who in some cases were willing to. Go into police facilities where they know, you would think, there's a whole building full of police officers who are armed. And start an armed confrontation inside that facility. Um, and you know, while we certainly hope that there aren't that many. I think you call them bad guys. I don't like to use that term much for my own reasons, but people out there who aren't like that. There are some, and there are, you know, there are people in this community who think differently than you and I do. Hopefully not a lot. Um, but there are people out there and, you know, like Detective Biller brought up the example of someone in Appleton. Who was willing to walk into a police parking lot and stab a police officer. And that's, you know, I I don't like. The fact that we live in a world where that kind of thing happens, but we do. And so, you know, one of my responsibilities as your police chief is to do everything that I can to keep our men and women safe. Um, and you you know, again, I'm I'm very respectful of the neighborhood that we live in and the community that we're a part of. But, you know, unfortunately, it and, you know, having lived through some civil unrest. And some some behavior directed at police facilities, I can tell you that it's out there. Um, you know, granted, this was a different city someplace else, but I have police facilities. Subjected to sustained attack over an almost six month period. Two thousand miles west of here. Um, hope that never happens and certainly we do everything that we can. In this organization to maintain our legitimacy in the community, which I think helps avoid some of that kind of thing happening here. But just the world that we live in, unfortunately, that's that's our environment. Um, and you know, again, some of these folks just having, and I'll I'll use an example from. My own career that I'll bet every one of the sworn people on this call can relate to. How many times have we had someone run from us in the neighborhood? Who wants to get away from the police, who's made short work of six foot fences in the process. And so if somebody's motivated enough, they. They can get over it and an eight foot fence is just that little bit harder. This is not, we don't need to deter most people in this community. From coming in and doing harm to somebody in our parking lot, because most people in this community aren't like that. They're not going to do that. But there's enough out there that that I think the risk is significant enough that unfortunately, I I I do believe this is necessary. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, I'm more than open to ways that maintain the security of our parking lot. That are also bit fit within our limited means that get at what we're trying to do. You know, we had talked about having a. An art competition and have kids design some kind of artwork that's weatherproof enough that we can put on the side of the fence or something. I mean, I'm certainly sensitive to those to those concerns. I don't want to give the impression that I minimize them at all, but just the balance of interest here. Pretty hard to get over.
Yeah, I've seen at, um, a number of school, um, locations, uh, around town and around the state. Where they've got some sort of plastic squares that snap into the, to the openings of a chain link fence. Uh, and they use it to make the school mascot or the team name or something like that. I would encourage if you did, you know, prevail today with a with a new fence. Um, that you look at something like that to get at least some some branding or, um, you know, some. Sloganing or something like that on that on that fence, so as it's not just an a a a bleak wall. Uh, that's confronting the passerby.
Definitely, and you know, really, if we if costs were no object, what I would be asking for is something that we could have a mural put on or something like that. But it's just, we don't have those kind of resources right now.
Well, there's a great New Orleans Busker Festival that just happened in the Broadway District, and I know it's not in the Broadway District, but one downtown. Maybe we can get that into the uh, the queue for next year as they just did the back of my building. So it's uh, pretty cool. Um, I have a couple of things. I know Barb has a couple of things. Um, Corey, I saw your hand pop up before we get to too much discussion. Um, I just want to check if that's okay, whether we call upon it. Is there anybody on the call beyond the the group that is the speaking for? Or against this potentially? Okay, great. Um, Barb, do you want to go first, then I'll go after you?
Sure, because right now it's comments, not just questions, right?
Well, now, since there's no one for against, it's whatever we want, discussion, we can ask about the applicant. It sounds like there's a lot of discussion and questions, so.
Okay, well, I I don't have questions because I felt that all my tests, um, were were met. That, uh, due to the physical conditions you need to the property, they couldn't use it in the way that they need to. Um, as a full parking lot, if we didn't allow that variance. And because it's the police department and they have many, many vehicles, they need all those parking spaces. Definitely, it's not contrary to public interest. It's in the public interest, um, for, I believe, for our police department to be safe. And, um, just going into my past life as an alder, as chair of finance, we had this on come to finance for for years. And we didn't have enough money. And we did finally pass it, um, before I left city council. And then additional monies were given by city council for this fence to be completed. So I think it's definitely within the public interest. And I want to say that the police department, to me, um, should be the experts in safety. And I have also a school security and safety background. I'm familiar with SEPTED, crime prevention through environmental design. Um, I believe if the police department in their wisdom is saying eight feet is what we need. To keep our people safe and to keep our vehicles safe, then it is incumbent upon me to listen to my experts. And the police department I see as our experts. Um, it would also be, um, there is an unnecessary hardship. Uh, there, there, excuse me, the intended use they is for parking. So I think that was also covered as far as, um, a necessary hardship. They need to be safe. I I will just advocate for the police department. I'm a hundred percent on board with this. I'm going to make the motion to approve it. But I will let everyone else speak first.
Thank you. And I do know, uh, Tom, I love the passion, Barb. It's great. Um, Tom, I know you had emailed Alder Galvin as well, who is also a former police officer as well. Do you want to read that for the record, or do you want to just have that entered in the record because it was emailed out to all the 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 board members?
Well, I would just ask all the board members if they read it.
Yes.
No?
Yeah.
Okay, then I I don't want to burn the time up reading Alder Galvin's, but, uh, in fairness. I also emailed the alder for where the police department's, uh, located. And I'll read his reply. Hi, Tom, I appreciate your diligence in reaching out before the meeting. It may or may not be where, but I did support the allocation. I oh, I did not support the allocation of ARPA funding for this fence. Because I am currently chairing an ad hoc committee that is trying to replace the facility. I do not believe spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a fence was wise. In addition to the two hundred thousand dollars on a roof, until our consultant was done with their space needs assessment in six to eight weeks. After the vote, I conceded I was in a minority, but I did plead for the police department to consider an alternative design. I do not believe an eight foot fence with slats should be allowed under any circumstance in the core of a downtown. It violates every urban design principle and creates a highly unconvincing, unwelcoming, sorry, image. In a place with high visibility due to the pedestrian density. This is a very poor design for a downtown facility. I received at least one call from a neighboring business opposing this as well. After receiving the notification, I encouraged them to email the committee. I have a great deal of respect for Alder Galvin and appreciate his insight. What's missing for me in his assessment is an analysis of total number of incidents and over what period of time. And to a certain extent, whether a six foot fence would have sufficiently deterred those incidents. We try to eliminate risk at all levels, but individuals like yourself are in an unenviable position of balancing. Risk mitigation needs versus a negative environmental impact. There is no clear formula to answer that question. I would ask you to ponder if a six foot fence is sufficient enough to mitigate the largest risk. While not further imposing a bad design in such a highly visible location. Thank you for your service time. Please let me know if you have any further questions. And in response to pondering that question, I am very much in agreement with, uh, Alder Barb. With respect to the police department, being our best experts and determining what's going to protect the people who protect us.
Thank you, Tom. And, uh, real quick, uh, I don't know if I captured that, but, uh, what was the alder for that? Was that Alder Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, I just want to make sure that's on the record as well. Um, okay.
Mail it to Stephanie too.
Yeah, great. Um, I have a couple of things that I'd like to to ask about, so, um. I'll start with, uh, six foot versus eight foot. Ultimately, it's three feet, right? If it was six feet, it would have to be see through. And the reason why that code exists, Steph, correct me if I'm wrong, is because of. People turning around corners and sightlines and making sure cars coming around can see pedestrians and such, right? So the six foot versus eight foot, in my opinion, you know, yes, the sight idea, and I don't think anybody loves the idea of having an eight foot, you know, fortress. However, the safety of the officers, my my brother serves in California, I is uh, most important. Um, so, but to me. Six foot for ace foot, it really comes down to the idea of being able to see, which brings me. Uh, I'm I'm not, am I incorrect there? That's why it would be three feet, but it would be six feet, chain link, no slats. But then you can see what's happening, which defeats the purpose, right?
Uh, the code specifically requires it to be three feet in the front and side setback, but that is the intention. So it's more visual for cars exiting and entering, so pedestrians can see them as well.
So that then brings me to the question of the the exit, which is, seems to be, with with my limited knowledge, the the exit. Which would be on Stewart Street was the one that we were talking about that was of concern. Is that, is that correct?
That is the vision triangle variance, yes.
Um, because the other one was entering, the other one was exiting. And so my question, is there any extra? Um, mirrors or obviously if, uh, the the cops are going out, you know, are they going to be? Extra safe coming out of that area? What's the plan there to to try and mitigate that concern?
The exit, the exit on Stewart Street actually meets the the vision triangle.
Oh, it does? I thought that was the one that didn't.
Uh, no, the the entrance into the parking lot.
Ignored everything I was saying, but, uh, okay, I don't have a but, that's it, great, solved. Um, the next thing on my list was, um, I I'd be interested if the board was interested. Obviously, I do know that there's been an ongoing, and without getting too much in the weeds of the politics of the city. Um, ongoing discussion about a new location for the officers and and well, I can't see a a use for this with the property. Because we're making decisions about the property as it moves forward. I'm wondering, Stefan, you can help me with this as well, is. Can we make this conditional for the current property? I think we've done that in the past. So if this property does sell or changes hand, that this. Fence kit does not meet code anymore, and then it can go away. Is that, that's something we can do, correct?
You would like to tie it to the use of the property.
Yeah, and I would, I would be really hopeful for that, again, considering urban design, all that stuff. I I would love the the the. Department to have a new building and and I hear Alder Johnson's thoughts on all of that. Um, so I don't know if the applicant would be, uh, open to that, but I think that would be something I'd like to add in. If we do approve this, is something that says, hey, you know, for this specific use, this is what we're doing. If that use changes, I'd love the fence to come down, um, because it's not the most awesome looking thing. I think there's a way to make it cool, but, um, that would be something I'd be interested in hearing from the applicant.
I I wouldn't see any reason not to do that. I mean, if we sell it, then it becomes some other, some other thing. Or even if the city wants to use it for something else, that that makes total sense to me.
Great, thank you. And this is maybe not a needed comment, but I just felt obligated to say it. Is that, going back to the protecting our officers and stuff, I think if, you know, we've seen other. Let's say teams that happen to be very popular in town, um, get granted variances for privacy. Um, uh, and we seem to be very okay with granting certain variances for very popular teams. To have, you know, fences that are very large for privacy, so maybe they can't get plays stolen. Um, and so I just thought, whether that's appropriate or not, I just think. I think that's important to call out, you know, is that our officers are are critical to what we do. I don't think anybody is going to stand here and say, like, constructing a giant fence in urban development is a great solution. And I think there are cool ways, especially with Alder Johnson, with the Maryland Busker Festival and maybe partnering. Uh, and where those funds can be done and something cool from the community could be done on that fence to make it more more acceptable. But the the safety of our officers and and everything that Chief Davis, and again, apologies for not knowing. Titles and stuff like that, um, to me is everything. And we live, unfortunately, in a really. Refrain from words I want to use, situation right now where it doesn't, it's not safe. So whatever we can do right now to mitigate potential impact, I'm all about it, as long as we're conditional using it. You know, my ask would be, like Noel said, to try and do your best to make it cool. And obviously, if there's other things in the work, you're in charge of spending the money. So if there's other things that you can do, work with city council, the mayor, whatever, um, to be fiscally responsible. I can't vote on that, you know, but I would ask that that's also considered in the process. We're here to just vote on the variants. But it's somewhat political and public here.
Right, and nor should questioning your design, you know, proposal be construed in any way as as not valuing your safety. Or the, you know, the 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 work that you do. Um, I'm sure you understand that.
Oh, of course, and I I don't think any of us take it that way. This is the the discussion that you have to have for something like this. Are we sure that this is a good idea? So I I don't think anybody. Got that message from from people asking legitimate questions about this project.
Yeah. All right. Any other, uh, comments, concerns, questions? Again, thank you for the dialogue and and, uh, the time. Obviously, there's individuals possibly waiting, but this is a a larger one and it's a public one. So I think, uh, as much discussion and thoughts are are important. Anything else?
Would you like a motion?
If there's nothing else, Barb, I think we're in.
I I would like to move that we approve it and attaching the provision. That if if this property were to change hands and no longer belong to the police department, then. I don't know how we say it.
Yeah, any Steph, any help with framing that that motion? Because I mean, I definitely like that in there. How can we frame that in the motion? So it's it's binding to either the use or the property ownership?
I would recommend doing it to both, um, because just, it could also be retained as a city owned property in a transition period. And we'd like to probably see that fence come down as soon as possible, once the police do vacate that parcel is what I'm understanding. Um, so we can certainly wordsmith it on the backend for our minutes and what goes out to the public. Uh, but I would recommend tying it to both the use and the property ownership.
So that it would be tied to the use and the property ownership.
Okay, that was the, that was, okay, got it. I think I think we got it for the record. That's fine. So I've got a a first and a second by Barb and Tom. Um, thank you for that. And and basically, again, I think everybody's on the same page, approving the variance with the idea. That if the the use or the property changes, um, that that fence would not be approved. Or the property changes, that that fence would not be approved or be to code and would either need another appeal. Or would be then not into code and therefore it needed to comply with code. Fair summarization, everybody. Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote. All those in any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the variance as requested, go ahead and say aye. Aye, any oppose?
Oppose.
Steven, opposed? Okay.
It's a symbolic proposal to the eight foot fence, not to the idea, so.
Okay.
I still think you could do it without it, but.
Noel, you said yes?
I was silent, but. Logged as a as an approval in this case.
Well, did it absten abstention?
Yeah, no, I'm not going to abstain. I've got enough information to make the call. I'll go with the majority here.
Okay, so we've got approval for one for that. Again, work with the city. Obviously, there's lots of other mechanics involved that we are not. We're not privy to, but again, thank you for your service to the city. Chief Davis, welcome to Green Bay. I'm a West Coast guy, so welcome. And thank you, everybody. I know there was a a large group and you went through our whole whole meeting almost. We've got a couple more here we need to get through, but again, thank you for your time and for your service to the community.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, and feel free to stay if you'd like and learn or go eat and enjoy.
All right, I might split, but thank you again, everybody. I really appreciate the the thoughtfulness and the conversation.
Yeah, thank you. All right, let's go back. We're so close. We've got two more. Noel, you weren't here, but there was a one of the earlier ones where no one was on the call. And so we've in a lot of times in the past, just moved those on, but we moved it to the end to see if anybody showed back up. Right now, we have appeals number twenty-two oh two five. John Jacob War, Jacob Art on behalf of Georgia Pacific Corporation proposes a new paved area as part of an expansion project. In a general industry district at nineteen nineteen South Broadway.
All right, thank you. So I'm sure everyone's familiar with the site. This is Georgia Pacific campus on South Broadway. Just a fairly large site here. They are doing an expansion project, which I'm sure you've heard of. And with that, there's some new paving and parking areas that are going to be proposed here. So this was in your packet, which I'm sure is a better view than I'm showing here on the PowerPoint, but just gives you a general feel for what they are proposing here for that parking expansion area. And what they are looking for for a variance is to deviate from quite a few sections of our code. So forty-four nineteen sixty-five, sections one through three are all listed here. I wanted to make sure that I called all these things out because they are looking to vary from every section of this code. And to avoid doing the planting area of landscape islands and the landscape medians as part of this expansion. And there's also requests to deviate from the driveway width, which would, let's see, the maximum width allowed would be twenty feet. At property and setback line and thirty foot at the curb payment, and they would like to expand from that. I think that the number is listed here, but the applicant I'm sure could speak to the dimensional information. But it's basically all of these sections of code to avoid doing the planting landscaping pieces of our parking. Code.
Okay. Let us jump to any questions for Steph? It looks like there's kind of a lot to go through potentially. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant. John, I see you were on muted. Thanks for being here and thanks for sitting through. I know you've been waiting a while, so thanks for being here and let's uh let's dive in.
Yeah, no problem. It's quite a meeting, so it's it's John Jean Court, so just.
One more time, I gotta start learning these names. What is it?
Jean Court.
Jean Court, okay.
Yeah, just the way it looks, so.
Overthought it.
Yeah, but anyway, I'm an engineer with Brander Engineering and in Green Bay and I'm working for Georgia Pacific. And like Stephanie had said, we're working on this parking lot. Georgia Pacific is the largest industrial facility in Green Bay. It's been around for over a hundred years. It's got a unique property. In general industry, right? It's it's bounded on the river on one end. Broadway Street on the other and actually Lombardi Avenue and dead ends on the east end right into the facility. So and in this case, there's a large expansion project that's going on at the north end. And it's so large, it's consuming and they're wedging it in between, I'll call it the boat slip and the existing facility. And the boat slip is actually a public facility, so that's and they're wedging that in, but they're using up a lot, a lot of parking space. And a lot of trailer parking lot. So hence, this is our proposed plan. And when you look at the proposed plan, maybe I don't know if you guys kind of captured it, but it's only the shaded areas in the plan. So this, if you look up on top, that's Lombardi Avenue to the right is Broadway Street. So all the unshaded area, that's essentially in service right now, including a portion of that detention pond on the west side or the upper left side. So as part of the project, we're going to be extending the detention pond. We're going to be. On the left to take care of all the stormwater management. We're putting in a new drop lot to extend the trailer parking. That's required. And then we've added approximately ten more, ten percent more green space than is required. By putting in a berm to separate semi trailer traffic from. Car traffic, you know, as we mentioned that parking lots use twenty-four hours a day, semi trailers will be coming in and out. For safety reasons, we wanted kind of a hard barrier there. And I guess the mill wanted a hard barrier there. They're very safety conscious. Right on the south side of that berm is a one-way driveway entrance for the new trailer or for the new semi over the road truckers. So that'll be a one-way in. And what's nice about this design is we can queue all those trucks. Inside the property versus having them out on Broadway Street, which makes a lot of sense. And that's where we need the wider entrances is on Broadway Street, so those semi trailers can can make that left-hand turn only into the facility. The hassle we have inside the drop lot is obviously trying to turn radiuses around landscaped islands gets to be very difficult. And like the police department, we need every car parking spot that we can possibly get. In here, including with snow removal, to get the large number of employees parked. And to make it happen. So that's kind of the the guts of it. I actually had a little PowerPoint presentation that I was going to put together. Try and share the screen, but. If there's no questions on this or if you have questions, please fire away. I I would like to, I think it's a. We talk about safety and you had a lot of discussion and I enjoyed the discussion on the police department the most, right? On the back and forth and how you worked your way through and and safety and and this is safety in mind of the public. Just based on how, if you look at that shaded parking lot area, we've got all the employees leaving on Lombardi. And all the truck traffic coming in on Broadway Street. So we're trying to separate that and by keeping the parking lot as large as possible to and snow. We want to make sure the employees are safe because they got a long ways to walk. To get to the mill and they're walking down through the parking lot. So. I think it's a good plan. I think it's a safe plan. I think it's in the best interest of the of the public safety. Both for the employees and the people traveling down Lombardi and Broadway Street.
Steph, do we have an aerial view of of the site as it exists now that you can pull up?
Yeah, if you don't, I've got one, Steph. If you I can share the screen, I kind of had that in my PowerPoint, but.
I got it.
While she's pulling that out, would you feel super disappointed if you weren't able to share your PowerPoint?
You know, if the things are going not my way, then I would. But I know we're sitting here at eight thirty and I have an eight and I've listened to it, so and I know you guys have an eight, but. I know in consistency in the past, we've come in front of the board and Tom might have been around, but we've never been denied one yet. Especially in a drop lot or parking lot with landscaped islands. And the wider the entrance just makes sense. I mean, to get a semi trailer in.
Yeah, and if we could pan over because we're not, you know, the the site is actually on the left side of the screen here that we're talking about.
Yep. There it is.
Do you want the parcel lines back on? It's kind of hard to.
Yeah, I I see it.
Okay.
I just wanted to see just how much it was already concrete and asphalt versus what it's going to. It looks like even though it's varying from the code, it's greener than it it is currently.
Yes, quite quite a bit, to be honest with you. And for instance, to know all that whole area on Potts Avenue, we demoed the buildings there and turned that all into into green space. At one time, that was all warehouse.
Yeah.
So we try and give back green space where we can give it, but in this case.
And the new structure is taking out some of your existing parking, is that correct?
That is correct. So up up, you see where the boat slip is?
Yeah.
Yeah, that one building that's got the diagonal on it, that's demoed. And then it's coming all the way down. The coal piles are going away, so you're going to get greener along the river too. The days of coal-fired boilers are gone. So that's all done and the the stacks in the back are coming down. There's demolition happening now. But that expansion is actually going from the river parallel with the boat slip all the way up to Broadway and taking out. That parking lot all the way. To that, I'll call it where the white roof is right there where the different sections are to the north, that's going to be all building. And then there's going to be, I understand, green space in that area too up in front.
And you're losing, you're losing maybe even more than a hundred stalls up there.
Oh, yeah.
That's where Wisconsin Michigan Auto used to be, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah, you've got a good memory, Steve. That's a long time ago, man.
Had a lot of crap cars back in the day.
Yeah, so, yeah. And what's unfortunate, we did that parking lot, I bet, five years ago. But that's a good thing, right? I mean, that's what you want, progress. So. I can show you the facility and the expansion if you guys are interested in that PowerPoint, if you're anybody's wants to. Now.
Anybody have any more? Any any thoughts, questions, concerns?
No concerns here.
Noel, you were asking some question, you good, Tom?
Yeah, I'm good.
I'm good.
All right.
I'm good too.
Cory, I know you're not voting, but I'm just going to check in with you, make sure you're okay.
Just one curiosity because of my auto insurance background, how many accidents do you actually have in the employee parking lot? That would be caused because of the lack of the landscaping and the islands and stuff. Because that's that's probably the main reason would be that those islands and stuff are there for more traffic flow versus the tight parking spaces.
Yeah, and we don't have any accidents in there, to be honest with you. And the majority of that you see is drop lot too with the turning radius of the semi, so. But.
Just out of curiosity, where do the semis come out? I see where you've got them coming in. Just just curious.
No, that's a good question.
Is it on Lombardi or?
If you can, Stephanie, can you put that site plan back up or the dry? So it'll be a one-way in and then they'll go to the drop lot, then they'll come around the west end of the buildings and then around the south. And then they'll exit back on Broadway Street and then that'll be a right turn only.
Oh, I see. Okay, all right. That makes sense, Noel. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna, I was just gonna comment. I think it's interesting because properties like this. Exist within us, like it's similar to the stadium, like they're so massive. That it's almost like it would be beneficial for them to have their own, you know. Code, like the stadium, we've talked about that in the past, probably prior to you, Noel, is like, you know, most cities have. Code for like very large properties that are like exist. I don't know what they call it, but I don't know. Interesting to see if there was something like that for this property. Anyway, anybody?
That's what Disneyland's got going on or Disney World, right?
Yeah.
They're they're going through that hassle right now.
Yeah, I think I think from a policy standpoint, that's probably not a great idea.
All right, anybody want to make a motion? We're all getting tired.
I motion to accept as is.
Steven, I got a motion and I got Tom.
Tom seconded.
Tom seconded to approve the variance. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving this current proposed plan and the just go ahead and say aye.
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 Any oppose? Okay, great. So that one's done five zero, so thank you. And I'm sorry that you didn't get to show your PowerPoint. Appreciate people that put time into PowerPoint presentations, but thank you.
Been practicing for two weeks, but.
Some really cool transition.
We're good. Thank you, guys.
All right, get some dinner. We're almost done, guys. All right, thank you much. All right, so now we have to go back to that other one and that one was, if I remember correctly. It was number three on our original agenda, Brittany Piper, Appeal two-two oh two-one. On behalf of Newfeld Enterprises, free fi- freestanding sign. Is there anybody on the call to speak for that?
Move to table.
Uh, okay, there's a motion. Okay.
Is it, is doesn't tabling mean it's dead or can we just move to delay to the next meeting?
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's what I mean. Yeah, table it until the next meeting.
Okay.
We don't have all those parliamentary procedures worked out like.
And I seconded that idea to delay it till the next time because I'd like some explanation as to why they need the second tombstone.
All right, so I'm not, any other discussion? All those in favor to delay to the next meeting? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any oppose? Okay, I hate to delay this next thing because we have next on our agenda, we have operational things.
Yeah.
But I do think if you if you guys could give me five minutes, just five additional minutes. There was the conversation about as we're experiencing right now, it's almost nine, right, eight forty-five. About moving this up. Then there's a couple of reasons. One, because it gets really long in the tooth sometimes. Two, the conflict with Alder, you know, one of the things I've been after, and I think we've seen an increase there and and. Is more older participation, but there is a lot of conflict, so it creates a reason for them not to come. So I'm not, I think there was the idea of moving it up a half hour. I I'll be honest, I would love to move it up three hours. But I don't know.
I can't do that.
So is there discussion or thoughts on moving it up? I have no skin in the game. I'll move it wherever you want, as long as it's moved earlier, so.
Could do it as early as four thirty, but I.
Finance and personnel meet at four thirty and that's about as early as things meet, although already getting it's in the afternoon, but. Yeah, four thirty would be fun too. I just know that it we we are always bumping against plan or protection policy or traffic bike and pad. There's just so many.
Does it impact if it's going against finance at all? I mean, you've got.
Tuesdays, no, so I'm just saying it as far as precedent, four thirty is 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 okay if people don't have to be at work until four thirty.
All right, let's go around the horn here and let's make sure everybody gets a say on this. Again, my say is the earlier the better. I'll do twelve o'clock in the afternoon, but four thirty I'll take. Barb, you're four thirty?
I'm four thirty.
Tom?
I just wondered about the public, you know, because they're usually working. And.
Oh, good call.
Yeah.
But but. I don't know.
There once, you know?
Yeah, I think and if people would want it toward the end of the agenda, if they can get there till five. I mean, I think there really are a lot of ways around that, because you you could set up your agenda in such a way that.
I also staff our landmarks commission meetings and we meet at four thirty and very rarely do we have any conflicts. It seems that most people in the Green Bay area are done with work by four thirty. And I have had before where someone just says, I get off at work at five, can you push it to yet?
Yes.
But it's a very rare conflict that we run into.
Thanks for the comments, Stephanie. Very good.
Can I ask a stupid question? Would a different baby better or is it just it's just hell across the board?
It's hell across.
Hell across.
Okay, fair enough.
Particularly hard for the planning department because Bill said EDA and Plan Commission on those days. And then the alders have like their alder meetings on Mondays.
Yeah.
The further the better because everything else doesn't start till five at the earliest, generally five thirty or six thirty.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll keep going around the horn. Steven, any thoughts? Four thirty?
You know, technically I work till five, but I also work for a company that's based in London, England, so.
So is that five o'clock their time?
It's it's like, that's like ten thirty at night for them, so I I don't, I'm not, I'm not paid by the hour, so it doesn't really matter. Uh, it's it's like, that's like ten-thirty at night for them, so I'm I don't, I'm not, I'm not paid by the hour, so it doesn't really matter.
Okay, and then Cory, I know you're new. Does that work for you?
Should be fine.
Okay, Steph, you're next on my screen. I'm assuming staff is okay with this.
Yep, um, both of our support staff work until four-thirty, five o'clock, and I work until four-thirty. So it's just another night meeting for me. Doesn't really matter.
Okay, Noel, how do you feel?
Yeah, that's four-thirty would be great.
Well, Jessica?
It's works for me.
Okay, that's great. That was quicker than I thought. So four-thirty, let's move it. Take a formal action on that. I don't think we need to, right?
Nope, we could just administratively move that.
The second question I have is, in that in that note, if there is individuals that might be delayed, how does that information come in? Do they have to request that? Is that something they can put in in their application? In terms of, you know, do we want to complicate it to make sure we're being accommodating? What we don't want to do is create more public, you know, obstacles. We're trying to fix that. So is there a way that when we intake an application, we can let them know, hey, if if you know, needing to be delayed on the thing, you know, just email us and let us know, and we'll put you as the last agenda item?
Um, so I'm trying to revamp a little bit how we intake applications anyway. So ideally, right now, they'd all be coming to me. I would process them to make sure that it's a variable request. And then I can, I usually just do a follow-up. This is going to be on the agenda at this time at this state. And then, you know, they follow up to say, I can't make it then, or I don't, I work until five. So generally, it's just an email correspondence, so I can adjust the the order of the agenda based off of that.
Awesome. That's great. Thank you for that administrative work and organizing all of that. That's that's really nice. Thank you. Um, okay, I for now, I think that's it. I don't think there's any operational things that are pressing other than that. Anybody else have anything that they want to talk about, or at least put on the agenda that we can talk about next time?
I I wouldn't want to add anything to the agenda, because this meeting was long enough. I really expected to find it be over by the time I got done with my extraordinarily long wait at Plan Commission. And to join a meeting, you know, over two hours into its run, and we're still going another hour later. We, you know, that's 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 almost a half an hour per item, and I'm wondering if we can look at tightening that up.
Yeah, and if that's if that's feedback for me, I tend to talk too much. So again, if it's, if Tommy, shut up, I'm open to that.
Tommy, I thought you did good today. You were focused on being short, but there was just a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
I know. A lot of stuff.
Is there any way we can limit the amount? I don't want to be, again, I don't want to kick things down. But I mean, this is like the fourth one in a row that's gone like over three hours. Is there anything?
In council, we limit people to speak to three minutes. That's it. We time it. There's a timer up. You speak for three minutes. And there was a lot of personal stuff going on with that, those neighbors. There what we should have just been shuttered down, Tommy. Be tough. This isn't part of why we're here.
Okay.
Your hunking was really on a line.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was. Okay.
I think that's a great idea, Barb, that we should have a time limit and and.
A timer on the screen. You do?
And and to get and to gavel. It's like, no, we heard this already. You're rehashing your argument from before.
This is not relevant to this discussion. Tommy, you can be tough. We're standing behind you.
That's good. I mean, that's good feedback for me. I'm not used to being a chair, so that's good feedback for me.
And I I don't think you're talking too much, man. I mean, it's it's, this was, this is more because, you know, tempers ran a little high on one. I think, I mean, I elongated it a little bit, talking with that poor couple we turned down for their driveway, because I do feel bad about it.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but, you know, some of these things just need to be talked out, you know.
And it's interesting, too, because the last couple of meetings, we've had a lot of more public discourse, you know, and the first couple of years I was on here, we didn't have that. So that's a good thing. We're getting community engagement, but it's just, it definitely adds length. So if there's ways, Stephanie, we can incorporate time limits. I mean, I can do a watch on my, you know, on my side and do it. Or if there's a way to do it digitally on the screen, that would be rad if we can start implementing, you know, ideas like that.
You know, digitally is digitally is better because then, because people will always argue with you. No, no, that person got three minutes and ten seconds. And so, I mean, honestly, we I've learned my lesson via counsel. You want to show that here is the time.
Great, I love it. Well, let's work on that, too. And again, thank you, everybody, for your time. This was a long one and and I think we're making progress, Steph.
Maybe maybe Tommy, too, maybe maybe we can just put all of the appeals requests where the contractor did the work without pulling a permit first in a special meeting that we do like once a quarter, and we just go, no, no, no.
No.
Yeah.
You know what? You know what's funny? And I don't, I don't know how, I don't want to discuss it tonight, because I I mean, I think we're all hungry. But I was on the Preservation Committee for my business, and they don't open the floor for discussion. They they did basically like counsel. They basically approve everything and they pull out ones that they want to hear from people on. And then they, that's when they open the floor and discuss. But other than that, they don't even open the floor and hear from people. They just basically talk to city. They actually ask city for a referral, like a recommendation, which I know we've avoided. And then that's it. They approve, 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 and it's so fast. And then they, when they only have questions or they don't, they don't feel that it meets it, that's when they open the floor and they want to hear from the applicant. So not for tonight, but that is something also that speeds things up significantly.
If we think there's one that's kind of a slam dunk.
Yeah.
Well, maybe there's a administrative way you can open and close the floor without having a vote every time. I mean, if we, if you could just declare the floor open and closed, that would make life a lot simpler.
I don't know how that does legally.
I could look into some of the legalities of that, because this board is run differently than other ones, because it is quasi-judicial and public hearing is part of that. You can do as the chair, just to say, you cannot speak. You've already spoken. Like, you're able to do that even if the floor is open. That doesn't give them the right to speak in a public forum, but I can definitely look into the legalities and put a memo together.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Maybe you can even use a we use a weasel word, like, instead of saying you're closing the floor, just saying we're no longer taking comment on this.
Yeah, there you go.
And then we could get done to send you his bullwhip.
Yeah.
We all just have to have a towel as well, like, you know, when I'm tapping the side of my glasses, means I I like this one.
Yeah, so, all right, I do think, not tonight, but a different discussion long-term about different ways to speed up the meeting for the public for us, whether it's some sort of way where we indicated at the beginning of the meeting about pulling certain ones out or a timer. I think everybody, including the public, would encourage some some speed here, because it's getting long, so.
Yeah, and you know, some of the, some of the applications we get are really well-constructed and have all the information in it. And maybe we should just look at those and go, you know what? This one, yeah, well, together, maybe we should just vote yes on it.
I agree, and I think we want to hear from them, because they put the time in to, you know, but there was a couple tonight where I'm like, I don't even, why are we listening to this? Because I know the board, and we're all going to vote no, or we're all going to vote yes, right? Like, I just know. So why are we doing it? And I think we do that because we want to be kind, but at the same time, are we? Because we're wasting everybody's time, so. We should talk about that next time. Let's uh, let's. Okay, thank you, Barb. Tom seconded. We got a motion to adjourn.
Need a motion to close the floor, please.
Oh, thank you.
I second.
All right, someone motioned, I think it was Noel, and I think Steven seconded to close the floor. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, kids are getting restless. Okay, so move. All right, move to adjourn, Barb, and I think, Tom, you had seconded earlier. All those in favor, say aye. All right, all right.